At this time, the Board will enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, and appointments, employment, conversations, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Roll call please. Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McAllen?
Aye.
Mr. Johnsonville?
Aye.
Mr. Smollett?
Aye.
It is now seven thirty, and the record is mostly is that the Board of Education returns to open session. Roll call please. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McAllen?
Aye.
Mr. Johnsonville?
Aye.
Mr. Smollett?
Aye.
It is now seven thirty, and the record is mostly is that the Board of Education returns to open session. Roll call please. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McAllen?
Aye.
Mr. Johnsonville?
Aye.
Mr. Smollett?
Aye.
Would everyone please stand and join me in the closing remarks. And now our next part of the agenda is our recognition. Dr. Small?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Mr. Eric Winkowski, our Director of Athletics and Activities, to get us started on introducing some wonderful students tonight.
Board of Education and Dr. Small, thank you for taking some time to honor some new talent to mathletes, and I guess we could call them HOSA-les also tonight. Also tonight here to support none of their students are Palatine High School Principal Toni Medina, Fremont High School Principal Kirk Tenifer, Conan Principal Julie Novak, and Assistant Principal Mark Langer, and Hoffman Estates Principal Mike Alter, and Assistant Principal Tom Mokon. Students and guests, as your sponsors introduce you, please stand in your seats and be recognized by the Board right there at your seat. Okay, we'll get started with the math team. Chris McToney, Chris is a National Board Certified Aperture to Science teacher at Fremont High School. He has been coaching the math team since two thousand and seven, has been the head coach since two thousand and twelve. In the last decade, his math teams have qualified for state meet ten times. I can even figure out that's one hundred percent of the time in the last decade he's been there. Chris is also a proud District two eleven graduate from Fremont High School. Chris?
It is my pleasure to introduce the members of the Fremont High School math team who earned medals at the ICTM Mathematics Funda, the District two eleven Board of Education. This has been the most unique season that the Fremont math team has ever faced, but despite the challenges they experienced this season, our students quickly adapted to the numerous changes to the way we practiced, competed, and worked together as a team. Because of their resilience and adaptability, they achieved numerous victories, and they learned a lot of mathematics along the way. I am so proud of our team's sixth place finish in the state, as well as the positive attitude and dedication to teamwork that they brought to practice and competition. Our students are accompanied tonight by their parents, whose love and support have helped our math team members grow up to be the terrific young people that they are today. Parents, please stand and be recognized. First, I'd like to introduce our freshmen who earned first place in the state for their performance on the Algebra One Written Competition. When you hear your name, please stand, and we will applaud after all names have been read. Yu Yu Lu, Gatsim Bel Palu, Trinav Santil Kumar, and Aditya Gupta, who also earned first place in the state for his individual performance, and third place in the state for his role on the calculator team. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce our sophomores who earned fourth place in the state for their performance on the Geometry Written Competition. When you hear your name, please stand, and we will applaud after all names have been read. Thomas Lu, Kevin Saab, Shoril Mazundurk, who also earned third place for his role on the calculator team, and Albert G, who also earned first place in the state for his individual performance. Congratulations. Finally, it is my pleasure to introduce our juniors and seniors, each of whom earned third place in the state as part of the calculator team. When you hear your name, please stand. Junior Sanjeev Devarajah, Senior Gabriel Klassen, who will be attending UC Berkeley next year to major in mathematics, and Senior Angelina Zeng, who will be attending MIT next year to major in computer science. Seniors, good luck next year. We value and appreciate the many contributions you have made to Fremont math team, and we look forward to hearing about your continued contribution to the fields of mathematics and computer science. To all of the students here tonight, thank you. You have truly upheld the Fremont math team's tradition of that. Thank you.
Next, we move on to our state award winners in HOSA. We'll get started with Conan High School. Their sponsor is Eric Hauser. Eric Hauser is a National Board Certified Science teacher at Conan High School, who is currently teaching dual credit health occupations and medical terminology, dual credit anatomy and physiology. And Eric is also the athletic coordinator at Conan High School. Eric?
One gift I got from COVID this year was cheaters, so I'm gonna put these on. Good evening. I'd like to start by saying thanks to the Board of Education, Dr. Small, Mr. Winkowski, Conan Principal, and Mrs. Novak, Conan Assistant Principal, Mr. Langer. Thank you for all your continued support. Without you, none of this would be possible. Also, I'd like to thank all the parents here with us tonight and watching from home. You truly have amazing sons and daughters, and without you all, obviously, they would not be successful. So, all the parents here tonight, please stand and be recognized. So, HOSA stands for Health Occupations Students of America. Students this year competed in a variety of virtual online competitions that qualify them for the state competition. Events ranged from individual general knowledge tests to teamwork events where students were judged on their ability to demonstrate specific healthcare professional skills. It has been quite a year, and it's been very interesting, and I can honestly say, the students being recognized tonight persevered and set a record for Conan HOSA with the most state champions we've ever had, sixteen in total. Quite the accomplishment. Students, when I call your name, please stand and be recognized. Your state champions from Conan High School are: First place in CPR in first aid, Rashida Gelda and Sayeda Ali. I don't think they're with us tonight, but Rashida was also a state champion last year, so hopefully next year we'll go for the three-peat. First place in public health, Mahika Jawain, Juliana Dugo, Reya Razdan, Satana Viswanathan, Samuel Hart, and Venusha Binketesh. First place in job seeking skills, Alishba Kamran. First place in forensic science, Surya Sundar and Brooke Jane. First place in public health education, Ria Jain and Nibeta Krishnan. And first place in public service announcement, Andrew Solaka, Caleb Kim, and Christian Kim. All of the Conan HOSA place winners this year will be competing in the HOSA national competition this summer, so good luck to everyone. One last thing before I go. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Sharon McCoyn, Conan Science Department Chair and HOSA co-advisor. Please stand. She has been a great mentor, department chair, colleague, co-advisor, and friend of me. She's retiring this year from District two eleven after many, many years. It's gonna be tough to see her go. I wish her all the best on starting the next chapter in her life, and I truly mean this. Thank you.
Okay, and then Hoffman Estates High School. Hoffman Estates High School sponsor, HOSA sponsor Nicole Brennan, who was unable to attend tonight's meeting in her absence. Assistant Principal Tom Mokon will present the HOSA athletes from Hoffman Estates High School. Tom?
On behalf of Coach Nicole Brennan, who couldn't be here tonight, the Hoffman Estates High School HOSA team would like to start by thanking the Board of Education and Dr. Small for all your support this season. It has been Brennan's pleasure working with all of the students in HOSA this year, and we are all very much looking forward to seeing what we grow and achieve in the future. Students, hawks, when you hear your name, please stand up and we recognize you and your parents for all your hard work. I'll begin first by recognizing our HOSA chapter president Nicholas Hawke, accompanied by his mother Sabesa. He has been in HOSA for three years, and this year he earned first place in dental terminology. Congratulations to him. The following students participated in HOSA for the first time this year and competed in their first HOSA competition as a pair. We have Aditya Shah, accompanied by his parents Sima and Mahesh Shah, and Shakar Shah, accompanied by her parents Tujah and Samir Shah, who earned first place in their team event Healthcare Display. Congratulations to both of you. And finally, the next seven students earned first place in their team event Parliamentary Procedures. They stand up one after another so we can recognize each one team. Brandon Kim, accompanied by his mother Suk Kim. Shrabi Kathari, accompanied by her father Menendra Kathari. Kayden Nakai, accompanied by his parents David and Maria Nakai. Rahil Patel, accompanied by his parents Namisha and Raquesh Patel. Anushri Rao, accompanied by her parents Shilgan and Jayshri Rao. Hamna Razik, accompanied by her parents Shazia Razik and Abdul Zakir. And one more who couldn't join us today, Samuel Ham. Congratulations to all of you.
Next, we'll bring up the students from Fremont High School. Their sponsor is Chris Eck, Andrew Hopless. Chris is completing her twentieth year teaching in District two eleven. She has coached and sponsored various activities throughout her time with the district, and this is her sixth year as a HOSA sponsor. Chris?
Thank you and hello. I would just like to say, we're glad to be here with you. Time for all of you to support Brennan. We're having a crazy year, but we definitely appreciate it. So, it's a great honor that I'm here to present to you four Fremont High School students that have shown outstanding dedication to continuous learning and making, and yearning for excellence in their endeavor to compete at HOSA State and in the upcoming HOSA International Competition in June. I'd like to first introduce Deduta Madal and her parents Tanya and Sonia. Deduta is a sophomore. She placed first in HOSA State for both Health Informatics and Clinical Nursing. She will be competing in Health Informatics for HOSA Internationals. Congratulations, and good luck. I'd next like to introduce Tanya Naya and her parents Pushpa and Sadash Naya. Tanya is a junior this year and placed first in HOSA State for Home Health Aid. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce Kelly Wong and her parents Min and Yong Wong. Kelly is a junior this year and placed first in separatingous writing. Congratulations. And last, I'd like to introduce Alex Wang and his parents Huaylu and Taiman Wang. Alex is also a sophomore this year and placed first in HOSA State for Dental Terminology. To conclude, I'd like to say what an honor it is to be able to work with such determined individuals who are following their health science passion. I wish you nothing but the best in your upcoming international competitions, and look forward to working with you all next year. Congratulations to all HOSA competitors here, and good luck.
Okay, and then finally, we have the Palatine HOSA chapter. Alexis MacLeod, who's been teaching Biology at Palatine High School for the last fourteen years, and she's been a sponsor of HOSA for the last three. Alexis?
Hello. I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Nicholas Small for the invitation to recognize and accomplish the students here today. I would also like to thank Palatine High School Principal Toni Medina and Activities Director Kim Blazer for all their continued support they offer the students at Palatine High School. And here, for so much has been taken away from our students, I am honored to have this opportunity to introduce Jusan Hudin, who is accompanied by his parents Abhis and Ruiha Hudin. Jusan is a sophomore at Palatine High School and is being recognized for his first place finish in the research poster event at the Illinois HOSA Leadership Conference. He researched and presented information on how heart disease affects our communities. His outstanding work not only earned him his first place finish at the Illinois Leadership Conference, but also earned him a spot at the HOSA International Leadership Conference in June. I am excited to see how Jusan can lead this cell in HOSA in the year to come. Please stand with your parents and be recognized.
Thank you to all the parents and the students. It is just amazing and refreshing to be able to see faces, and we have so many people here in our audience. Thank you to the students for your dedication, your resilience, and your commitment to your knowledge and growing. And thank you to the parents, all of your support. You can see it come to fruition. Thank you so much for everything that you do, and support for the school, and support for the students. So, thank you. At this portion of the meeting, we open it up for public comments, and I do have one person who is... If I could ask for one, sorry, one of my ministers. Do we have to move anybody in from the media center? Okay. If you would like to leave and enjoy the rest of the evening, you are certainly welcome to leave at this time, or you can stay for the entire meeting. If you wish to leave, please. Okay. Then we're gonna continue. At this point, it's public comments, and we only have one individual who would like to address us, so we can give that individual five minutes. And the individual is Dave Klassen. And Mr. Klassen, if you'd like, please give us your name, and if you'd like to say which, if you live in the district.
Hello. My name is Dave Klassen. I speak here today on behalf of myself and of Maya Naya, a fellow senior at Fremont High School, but neither on behalf of the Viking Wall, Fremont's official student newspaper, nor its advisors. Prior to the April sixth election, Maya Naya and I published a series of candidate questionnaires in the Viking Wall. All board candidates, including Miss Kristen Steele, chose to participate in the questionnaire. At the April twenty-ninth Board of Education meeting, Mr. Dombrowski said, quote, "Miss Steele approached me with a concern that the student's teacher would not allow her responses to the questionnaire because they had been published elsewhere and were not unique." Mr. Dombrowski then referenced this as a possible violation of Board Ethics Policy DVDFA slash DTH. The policy has four requirements for a ethical violation. One, a district employee during work hours. Two, preparing or reviewing responses to candidate questionnaires. Three, in connection with a campaign for elective office. Or on behalf of a political organization. And four, for political purposes. So, let's quickly go through those four requirements. First, our newspaper advisor exhibited minimal editorial control over our reporting. In line with the principles of an independent student press, he neither modified the questions we asked nor the responses we received. We did not consult him during our correspondence with Miss Steele, and he was not even made aware of the issue until Miss Steele had provided a satisfactory response, and we considered it an utter close. If there were an ethical problem, it would be miles and miles beyond this. This fails the first requirement to the action of the district. And second, our advisor did not prepare candidate responses. While he did review them prior to publication, the responses were final by that rule, as the word "review" implies a possibility of change being made. He did not review the responses. This fails the second requirement. Third, our advisor acted in his capacity as head of the Viking Wall. He did not act in connection with a campaign or political organization, bearing the third requirement. Fourth, to the extent that our advisor acted, he did so for journalistic, not political purposes. This fails the fourth and final requirement. There was no violation of Policy DVDFA slash DTH. Under the last we find it prudent to explain why we initially declined to publish Miss Steele's responses. Miss Steele first responded to our questionnaire with a generic press release. We rejected her response because she did not conform to the question and answer format we had set out for all candidates. When Miss Steele then responded with links for evidence in the Daily Herald, the League of Women Voters Forum, and her Facebook page, we again rejected her response because she did not respond to our specific questions. When another candidate sent us a press release instead of our revised responses, we replied in the same way. Mr. Dombrowski, in his statement, said that Miss Steele said that he had prevented publication of the responses, quote, "because they had been published elsewhere and were not unique." This is false. We directly told Miss Steele, quote, "You are free to duplicate your responses so long as you explicitly state which of our questions you are answering." Prior publication and uniqueness were not an issue; they were explicitly allowed. Rather, we declined to copy paste her responses on her behalf or otherwise interpret her messaging to fit the question.
Do we have one more?
Thank you. Because we believe that this would constitute improperly preparing her response or her... We believe our actions were not only in line with the letter of the ethics policy, but also its theory. So, to the extent that we discuss reviewing Policy DVDFA slash DTH, I hope it is to clarify the right of an independent student press to provide high-quality, fact-based covers to the community. We also hope that we approach this topic with recognition of the fact that even in the absence of an overt or official act of the Board, a prudent discussion could have a chilling effect on the student press for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Specifically, I'd like to say thank you for the clarification, and your comments were very much appreciated. Sincerely.
Thank you. At this point, we move along to our Curriculum Development and Professional Learning in District two eleven. Presentation.
Thank you. As our presenters are coming forward and are preparing for the presentation, I'd like to take a moment to thank each one of our faculty members who are joining us tonight that are gonna share with us an overview of our curriculum development processes, as well as of our professional development that occurs in unique and in sometimes consistent manners across our district. There is a detailed report in Board Docs that gives a wealth of additional information and details for the Board members and the public. Faculty members, thank you so much for joining us tonight. I know May is a very busy month, and I appreciate you being here to share your individual experiences with the Board. Josh Schumacher, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, will introduce each one of them to us, and again, thank you so much for being with us today.
The mission of Palatine High School District two eleven is to serve the educational needs of the community, inspiring all students to successfully contribute to the world. This mission is achieved through the many programs and services that we provide to our community, but perhaps none of us is more impactful than our comprehensive and rigorous curriculum. Our district values the mentality of academic learning and education in learning by stating that we value engaging curriculum built upon high-quality educational experiences to develop critical thinking, and the continuous pursuit of knowledge, preparation, and readiness to pursue future endeavors. Our rigorous and relevant District two eleven academic curriculum provides teachers with an organized framework and enables them to continuously monitor student progress towards the mastery of learning standards. Tonight, we'll hear from some of our excellent educators from District two eleven schools. Since this presentation coincides with the report on our board agenda, these educators will focus on how they operationalize the components of curriculum and professional development through specific examples from their classroom in those schools. Joining us this evening is Hoffman Estates High School World Language Department Chair, Sharice Bartman, Charlotte High School Special Education Teacher and Instructional Coach, Olivia Morelli, Conan High School English Teacher, Zion Nathan, Palatine High School Science Department Chair, Elect, Darian Sanchez, and Fremont High School Principal, Elect, Mark Langer. They will explain the practical application of curriculum development and modification, department, and school-wide professional learning opportunities, what a professional learning team does in District two eleven, and how they have specifically adapted over the past year. Our District two eleven curriculum is operationalized by what we call the instructional cycle. This includes our carefully developed District two eleven critical learning standards, our high-quality classroom instructional methods, and our varied assessment methods, including formative assessments and our summative district benchmark assessments. Our District two eleven critical learning standards define both the knowledge and skills that students should be able to know and should be able to do in each of our District two eleven courses. These standards, which were developed collaboratively by our teachers and administrators, form the foundation for the content and instructional method utilized in our classrooms. Our critical learning standards are directly connected to the state learning standards, which are provided by the Illinois State Board of Education with the assistance of various national organizations. Our critical learning standards form the foundation for student achievement, the next component of the instructional cycle, and the actual instructional methods that are used in each classroom. Each District two eleven teacher is encouraged to plan and organize individual activities based on the culture and makeup of their specific classroom. But our teachers also work collaboratively in professional learning teams to make instructional decisions based on student achievement data. This concept is important because that collaboration around the actual student achievement data shifts the conversation from teaching to learning. The focus on learning allows for deep, meaningful discussions about what is working in our classrooms. These professional learning teams are organized by teachers who teach the same course in the same school or sometimes across the district. These teams speak regularly during our early morning work sessions and focus on analyzing or modifying instructional activities, remediation possibilities, or enhancement opportunities for students. This collaboration is critical to ensuring the continued vertical and horizontal alignment of our curriculum, as well as sharing of the most effective instructional methods based on achievement data. The regularity and the tidiness of the schedule of early morning work sessions has supported our coordinated strategies to ensure that students achieve at high levels. To give you a complete understanding of how our
And Mr. Klassen, if you'd like to, please give us your name and if you'd like to say which, if you live in the district.
Hello, my name is Dave Klassen. I speak here today on behalf of myself and of Maya Nyack, a fellow senior at Front High School, but neither on behalf of the Viking Wall, Brown's Official Student Newspaper, nor its advisors. Prior to the April 6 election, Maya Nyack and I published a series of candidate questionnaires in the Viking Wall. All board candidates, including Miss Kristen Steele, chose to participate in the questionnaire. At the April 29 Board of Education meeting, Mr. Dombrowski said, "Miss Steele approached me with a concern that the students' teacher would not allow her responses to the questionnaire because they had been published elsewhere and were not unique." Mr. Dombrowski then referenced this as a possible violation of Board Ethics Policy DVDFA slash GPH. The policy has four requirements for a ethical violation. One, a district employee during work hours. Two, preparing or reviewing responses to candidate questionnaires. Three, in connection with a campaign for elective office. Or on behalf of a political organization. And four, for political purposes. So let's quickly go through those four requirements. First, our newspaper advisor exhibited minimal editorial control over our reporting. In line with the principles of an independent student press, he neither modified the questions we asked nor the responses we received. We did not consult him during our correspondence with Miss Steele, and he was not even made aware of the issue until Miss Steele had provided a satisfactory response and we considered it an utter close. If there were an ethical problem, it would be miles and miles beyond this. This fails the first requirement to the action of the district employee. Second, our advisor did not prepare candidate responses. While he did review them prior to publication, the responses were final by that rule. As the word "review" implies a possibility of change being made, he did not review the responses. This fails the second requirement. Third, our advisor acted in his capacity as head of the Viking Wall. He did not act in connection with a campaign or political organization, bearing the third requirement. Fourth, to the extent that our advisor acted, he did so for journalistic, not political purposes. This fails the fourth and final requirement. There was no violation of Policy DVDFA slash GPH. Under the last we find it prudent to explain why we initially declined to publish Miss Steele's responses. Miss Steele first responded to our questionnaire with a generic press release. We rejected her response because she did not conform to the question-and-answer format we had set out for all candidates. When Miss Steele then responded with links for evidence in the Daily Herald, the League of Women Voters Forum, and her Facebook page, we again rejected her response because she did not respond to our specific questions. When another candidate sent us a press release instead of our advice responses, we replied in the same way. Mr. Dombrowski, in his statement, said that Miss Steele said that he had prevented publication from the responses, quote, "because they had been published elsewhere and were not unique." This is false. We directly told Miss Steele, quote, "You are free to duplicate your responses so long as you explicitly state which of our questions you are answering." Prior publication and uniqueness were not an issue, they were explicitly allowed. Rather, we declined to copy paste her responses on her behalf or otherwise interpret her messaging to fit the question.
Do we have one more?
Thank you, because we believed that this would constitute improperly preparing her response for her. We believe our actions were not only in line with the letter of the ethics policy, but also its theory. So to the extent that we discuss reviewing Policy DVDFA slash GPH, I hope it is to clarify the right of an independent student press to provide high-quality, fact-based covers to the community. We also hope that we approach this topic with recognition of the fact that even in the absence of an overt or official act of the Board, a prudent discussion could have a chilling effect on the student press reviews to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Specifically, I'd like to say thank you for the clarification and your comments were very much appreciated. Sincerely.
Thank you. At this point, we will move on to our curriculum development and professional learning in District 211. Presentation.
Thank you. As our presenters are coming forward and are preparing for the presentation, I'd like to take a moment to thank each one of our faculty members who are joining us tonight. They're going to share with us an overview of our curriculum development processes as well as our professional development that occurs in unique and then sometimes consistent manners across our district. There is a detailed report in Board Docs that gives a wealth of additional information and details for the Board members and the public. Faculty members, thank you so much for joining us tonight. I know May is a very busy month and I appreciate you being here to share your individual experiences with the Board. Josh Schumacher, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, will introduce each one of them to us. And again, thank you so much for being with us today.
The mission of Township High School District 211 is to serve the educational needs of the community, inspiring all students to successfully contribute to the world. This mission is achieved through many programs and services that we provide to our community, but perhaps none of us is more impactful than our comprehensive and rigorous curriculum. Our district values the mentality of academic learning and education and learn by stating that we value engaging curriculum built upon high-quality educational experiences to develop critical thinking and the continuous pursuit of knowledge, preparation, and readiness to pursue future endeavors. Our rigorous and relevant District 211 academic curriculum provides teachers with an organized framework and enables them to continually monitor student progress towards the mastery of learning standards. Tonight, we'll hear from some of our excellent educators from District 211 schools. Since this presentation coincides with the report on our board agenda, these educators will focus on how they operationalize the components of curriculum and professional development through specific examples from their classroom in those schools. Joining us this evening is Hoffman Estates High School's oral language department chair, Shariya Sparkman; Shondar High School's special education teacher and instructional coach, Olivia Morelli; Conant High School's English teacher, Zaya Nathan; Palatine High School's Science Department Chair-elect, Darius Sanchez; and Front High School Principal-elect, Mark Lang. They will explain the practical application of curriculum development and modification, department and school-wide professional learning opportunities, what a professional learning team does in District 211, and how they have specifically adapted over the past year. Our District 211 curriculum is operationalized by what we call the instructional cycle. This includes our carefully-developed District 211 critical learning standards, our high-quality classroom instructional methods, and our varied assessment methods, including formal assessments and our summative district benchmark assessments. Our District 211 critical learning standards define both the knowledge and skills that students should be able to know and should be able to do in each of our District 211 courses. These standards, which were developed collaboratively by our teachers and administrators, form the foundation for the content and instructional method utilized in our classrooms. Our critical learning standards are directly connected to the state learning standards, which are provided by Illinois State Board of Education with the assistance of various national organizations. Our critical learning standards form the foundation for student achievement, the next component of the instructional cycle, and the actual instructional methods that are used in each classroom. Each District 211 teacher is encouraged to plan and organize individual activities based on the culture and makeup of their specific classroom. But our teachers also work collaboratively in professional learning teams to make instructional decisions based on student achievement data. This concept is important because that collaboration around the actual student achievement data shifts the conversation shifts the conversation from teaching to learning. The focus on learning allows for deep, meaningful discussions about what is working in our classrooms. These professional learning teams are organized by teachers who teach the same course in the same school or sometimes across the district. These teams speak regularly during our early morning work sessions and focus on analyzing or modifying instructional activities, remediation possibilities, or enhancement opportunities for students. This collaboration is incredible to ensure continued vertical and horizontal alignment of our curriculum as well as sharing of the most effective instructional methods based on achievement data. The regularity and the tidiness of the schedule of early morning work sessions has supported our coordinated strategies to ensure that students achieve at high levels. To give you a concrete understanding of how our processes work, Mr. Darius Sanchez, current Front High School Science teacher and a department chair-elect at Palatine High School, will talk about a recent major change in our science curriculum.
Hello, my name is Darius Sanchez and I'm a science teacher at Front High School. In 2014, the state of Illinois adopted new learning standards for science education. The standards are called Next Generation Science Standards, which I'll call NGSS for the remainder of my time. What are these standards and why are they important? NGSS is a three-dimensional framework to build scientific capacity in our youth so they can attempt to answer questions of future generations. The framework highlights universal themes in all areas of science while emphasizing science in education and engineering practices. Each main discipline also has core conceptual ideas. It is being expected full implementation of the standards by the 2016-2017 school year. District 211's conversion to NGSS seems like ancient history, but at the time, the task was daunting. Although my personal journey towards full implementation of NGSS is incomplete, over the next few minutes, I want to describe how my experience has impacted my classroom and my professional practice. Teachers, teaching, teachers. Across the district, our first task was to understand the NGSS framework. Although now, NGSS doesn't seem complicated to me. In 2016, the framework was challenging to understand and conceptualize. Similarly, it was difficult to find inspiration to embrace NGSS. However, this is where the power of District 211 comes in. In a fall District-wide Institute Day, Tanya Kadovich, a science teacher at Hoffman Estates, presented on creating a curriculum aligned with NGSS. To summarize her presentation, in one sentence, she described how you can use students' questions and their classroom products to create scientific models. She guided us through the process of getting students to ask questions while engaging them in authentic science. After hearing from Tanya, the light all turned on. I had a very good moment. Science education should invite students to look at their surroundings and ask questions. The students' questions lead to more questions, which eventually leads to data or information. Eventually, students use their acquired information to test their ideas. Professional growth. From that experience, I wanted to learn more. I attended four conferences to better understand the framework and to further my implementation of NGSS in the classroom. One conference that I attended was the Northern Illinois Science Educators Conference, where several teachers presented on creating NGSS storyline lessons. A storyline lesson is exactly what it seems. It's a lesson that is anchored on a real story from the natural world. For example, my students filled into a story about the decrease in buffalo population in the African Serengeti. At first, slow-moving buffalo in the middle of Africa doesn't sound all that interesting. But once my students saw images of all wildlife and real footage from the Serengeti, they were ready to go on a safari, and the questions and ideas they had took over the classroom. One idea led to another, and eventually, my students were ready to be experts on the National Geographic Channel. Well, maybe not the National Geographic Channel, but Disney Junior probably would have displayed their promise. Collaboration in authentic science. My most recent success story is what I went with. While working with my fellow AP Environment colleague, Tristan New Peak, we collaborated with real practicing scientists at the International Sky Day Project and utilized their data in the classroom to teach our students about Keystone's beaches. Again, we made use of a naturally occurring storyline and presented our students with a problem. Our students analyzed data, posed questions, searched for answers, refined their questions, and created explanatory models with the information they gathered. Finally, our students created blog posts and shared them with real scientists at the Sky Day Project. To me, this is where NGSS came to life. Real scientists from today are communicating with District 211's very own Next Generation Scientists.
I want to take a moment to highlight some of the experiences that Darius just described. Professional learning, which is also sometimes called professional development, refers to the many types of educational experiences related to an individual's work. While many fields require members to participate in ongoing learning, education research has shown that teaching quality and school leadership are the most important factors in raising student achievement. For our teachers, the school leaders need to be as effective as possible. They need to continually expand their knowledge and skill to implement the best educational practices possible. To accomplish this, District 211 provides an extensive array of professional learning opportunities for our staff. These opportunities are an integral part of our school and district's strategies to continue to raise student achievement and maintain a rigorous, relevant curriculum. The most effective professional learning is characterized by sustained, intensive, collaborative, job-invented, data-driven, classroom-focused activities. Because of this, District 211 provides internal and external opportunities for staff members to participate in their professional learning experience. As aforementioned, our District 211 teachers regularly collaborate together in professional learning teams and communities. This is one of the sustained, systematic opportunities in which our teachers can learn from one another while engaging in discourse related directly to student achievement and classroom instructional methods. Our early morning work sessions are critical to providing the space and time for these conversations to occur. Each professional learning team is facilitated by a teacher leader who creates an agenda and organizes data and documents for each meeting. During our district institute days, these professional learning teams from each school gather together in larger, district-wide professional learning communities to share best practices across our school and to learn from teacher leaders. It is not uncommon for our professional learning communities to collaborate with experts or consultants from outside District 211 during these times as well. Specific focus is given to textbook adoptions, modifications to our critical learning standards, and analyzing or counting district assessments we traditionally meet from across our school. Each school hosts regular monthly school-wide professional learning sessions focused on school or district goals, topics of interest or relevancy, or innovative educational concepts or research. These regular monthly meetings allow faculty to learn together and ensure that the implementation of school or district-based initiatives are collaborative and integrated across the entire school. In addition to these school-wide monthly sessions, each school has the opportunity to organize specific institute day activities at the beginning of each semester during our teacher institute days. These teacher institute days typically include school-wide large and smaller learning sessions tied for academic departments and professional learning teams to meet and collaborate, and opportunities to organize and communicate school initiatives and programs. In addition to the school-level professional learning experiences, District 211 staff can participate in educational practices, in-district courses, and university graduate level coursework to advance the content, knowledge, and teaching skill. Each school is providing a budget for faculty attendance, of which teachers could take advantage with the approval of their department chair and staff development instructor. It should be noted that many of our faculty also have chosen to present at local and national conferences, which is a prestigious opportunity to show the excellent learning opportunities that students experience in District 211. Perhaps the most important of all of these opportunities is that the work our staff accomplish in community with each other. Next, we will hear about some of the school-wide work that has brought Front High School staff closer together this year.
Thank you, Josh. Over the past four years, one of my roles as an assistant principal at Cullin has been as a professional development administrator. In this position, I've worked collaboratively with other teachers and administrators not only within this school but also across the district to move far and forward in curriculum development and professional learning. At Conant, I'm a resource coordinator involved in professional development in some ways. While individual departments and PLTs have some very specific professional development needs, school-wide PD is predominantly teacher-driven and over the last few years has focused on equity and excellence for all students who attend Front High School. In 2019, we kicked off the year with a school-wide equity simulation and put our staff into the shoes of our students by role-singling in real-life situations that were taken from our very own students' lives. This was a higher paying experience for most of the staff. These lessons that we learned were built upon throughout the year as we continued incorporating the themes of equity into other school-wide professional development experiences. This year, this is different for so many reasons. The standard staff development team has worked into what we call the Teaching and Learning Team, or TLT. This team is made up of H faculty members and myself, whose focus is on providing support to our teachers for the highest quality instruction for our students, whether it be in-person, remote, or hybrid. Professional development this year has included topics ranging from how to structure lessons to how to set up classrooms for varying instruction. The focus this semester has been on providing targeted professional learning. After sending out a survey, staff received follow-up offerings including training sessions, one-on-one coaching, and email tips and resources along with small group sharing chats. In addition, the TLT has collaborated with other groups at Conant and across the district to produce the Teaching and Learning Power packs, which features conversations related to equity, instructional strategies, and other type of topics to support student learning. Because we are in a pandemic, we know that the progress we have made in the world of equity is now as important as ever. Our equity team, which is an extension of our TLT, is a collaborative team. It's key to know the importance of our governing of faculty participating in all school book studies on the right-hand culturally responsible teaching and learning. And we have a rally that will be talking a little bit later about how this is offered to teachers across the district. But we've built it at a building level, we're in a place where all teachers would benefit from it and therefore facilitate students. Culturally responsible teaching, or CRT, puts a focus on a student and not the learning target. It is a pedagogic and recognized effort that includes students' cultural references in all aspects of teaching and learning. Just a few of the characteristics of CRT are positive perspectives on parents' behaviors, communication of high expectations, student-centered instruction, and learning within the context of culture. The book draws on cutting-edge neuroscience research to offer innovative approaches for design-complementing brain-compatible culturally responsible instruction. And over the past year, Conant's faculty has leveraged whole-school PD time to have meaningful discussions on learning and how it impacts our instruction and in turn, student learning. Although it may seem to be unrelated, another topic that is interwoven with our school-wide PD this year is the Title IX Act, with a focus on trauma response strategies to sexual harassment and sexual assaults. This past year, we have dedicated two professional development sessions connected to the understanding of this important topic. The goals of this PD were to update the faculty and staff on Title IX issues at the national, local, and school level, equip faculty and staff with the ability to recognize the properly addressed instances of sexual harassment, and create a sense of community for how to prevent and address issues of sexual harassment and sexual assault. The lessons learned from this year's PD do not stand alone and do not rank for the conclusion of this school year. It will continue to be incorporated into future professional developments. And now, to discuss the role of hybrid learning implementation, also from Front High School, the English teacher, Zaya Nathan.
Thank you, Mark. Well, my name is Zaya Nathan, and I'm an English teacher at Front High School. More than ever, going into this school year, it was important for me to start my planning with a focus on feedback and flexibility for students. We actually consider our students as their own stakeholders in any scenario we tackle throughout the year. Students' quality and morality, and our community education, and specifically the way 211 prepared for this school year, gave us the opportunity to provide that for them. Professional development that helped me prepare for this year focused on building connections with students, prioritizing standards, student agency, and addressing learning loss. Much of our professional development started with prioritizing the connection with those with students. When I was a student at Shondar High School, I was inspired to become an educator by the teachers who saw me and connected with me outside of the curriculum. Since we did not have the opportunity to see some of our students face-to-face this year, it was important that we thought about creative ways that we could still make meaningful connections and appeal to our students' individual interests. At Conant, I revisited the professional development that we call Get Five to Get Forty-Five. The idea is that a teacher takes five minutes for social-emotional activities in the classroom to learn more about their students, and means for a more productive forty-five minutes in the remainder of the period. This year, we were working with an hour-long block. Each day, I used cell readers to gauge how students were feeling that day and journaling that introduced the lesson or helped me get to know my classmates. After, in order to get, build a sense of community, students shared with their classmates and gradeyard. It was important for me to still keep the social element of school alive even when we were fully grown. Given the hybrid and remote schedules, our summer professional development had a focus on adapting and prioritizing curriculum without losing valuable classroom content. I teach a senior writing course titled Introduction to Rhetoric that provides our students with the opportunity to be exempt from the college placement exam when they pass the course with a C or A. I know this is an extremely equitable opportunity for our students, so it was important for me that I did not cut curriculum. In collaboration with my PLT, we worked instead to prioritize our critical learning standards. With that in mind, I focused on one performance-based assessment that asks students to discuss areas in their community that they see in need for improvement. Students interview members of the community and eventually will present their ideas to leadership in order to bring the real world into the classroom. The assignment was broken down to include each skill necessary for a college-bound student without needing to cut curriculum. Most importantly, the assignment was engaging for students, seniors, whether they were in the classroom or connected remotely. This year, I also intentionally left some of the expectations in my syllabus a bit vague compared to years prior. We were entering a different type of school year, so I thought it makes sense to create the norms of my classes together with my students. Back in August, our building hosted professional development that included sessions on engaging students in synchronous learning environments. Teachers agreed that it was important to engage students by making them authentic stakeholders and listening to their feedback. Recently, our professional development related to Hannah's fully responsive teaching and the program that Mr. Lators spoke about also included feedback from students on how they would like to use Hannah's methods or in the classroom. Teachers were able to discuss that feedback in small groups in order to improve their own curriculum based on how our own students need. Academic supports were reaffected to cater to certain academic skills by taking from learning loss. In the English department, I was in charge of sophomore academic support where students were able to get additional help. Students had the opportunity to jump in via Zoom or in person. I thought it was a very convenient way for students to sign on, even if it was just for ten minutes, and reach out to a teacher for additional support. Whether it be speech-writing college essays, writing support, AP tutoring, students had the opportunity to meet with an expert in teacher realm in our afternoon academic support session. I used my support to have one-on-one engagement with students who were struggling, hold group study sessions, or even reconnect with students from a year prior. Our afternoon professional development also made time for teachers to meet and discuss vertical alignment. That built in time helped me lean on other time-high professional learning themes and collaborate ideas to ensure we are providing the best experience for all students. Thank you for your time tonight. I am now going to pass it over to Shondar High School's employee, Olivia Morelli. She will discuss how instructional coaching has been integrated across the district.
Thank you, Zaya. Good evening, everyone. I am Olivia Morelli Baima, and I am one of the six instructional coaches in District 211, serving Shondar High School for the past seven years. In this role, I steer individuals in the PLTs, as you said, as a part of professional learning teams, through personalized professional development cycles. So, in essence, a coaching cycle consists of a series of conversations between coach and teacher or coach and team that engage them in deep reflection about their teaching and learning practices. All with the mind to make enhancements in the classroom that would positively impact student learning. Every cycle is deeply rooted in equity, recognizing the innate talents and gifts that other students bring to our classroom and making sure that each student has what he, she, or they need in order to thrive. A cycle begins, and I'm going to watch for a cycle that begins if it were a teacher and coach rather than a team and coach or language-based. A cycle begins with a conversation about that teacher's aspirations for kids of her classroom. We take a look at which class the teacher would like to engage in for this particular cycle, and we talk about what they are kind of looking for. At that point, the coach kind of just gets a sense of where the cycle might be. Perhaps it's technology integration, we might be looking at student engagement, we might be looking at a specific instructional strategy that's to be developed, but we do get a sense there. And then we move into the plan phase, where there's an observation that takes place. And I go and am invited into the classroom by the teacher and just kind of take notes of what a regular day in that classroom looks like. We meet during the plan time and talk about what happened during that observation, setting an intention. What do we want students to do differently as a result of all of this wonderful work together? The answer to that is our student-centered goal. Once that student-centered goal has been established, the coach brings to the teacher a variety of strategies that will help those students get to that goal. So we explore strategies and we begin to select, the teacher will select which one, which best course of action. We also begin to talk about implementing best tracks. In the implementation phase, the teacher can choose on which support the coach is offering during implementation of strategies, and the coach goes in, once again observing and collecting data. That data is then used in the next phase, which is our assess phase. And in that assess phase, we reflect on that data. Did students do what we wanted them to do? Did they achieve the goal? If students did, we celebrate. That's terrific. And then we talk about how that teaches them further to implement that strategy, technique, or tool into their other classes. If they didn't, students did not meet the goal, or if just a few of the students did meet the goal, we loop back into that plan and come back through that cycle until all students are fully acceptable. So as you can see, this instructional coaching cycle is highly personalized. It's one of the most impactful professional development opportunities that an educator can engage in. It's non-valuable, it's growth-centric, it's recursive, and ultimately, with assuming and building that teacher's capacity to impact student learning for the positive. So here are a couple of examples. Recently, in an AP Social Studies course, a teacher was concerned with the unit assessment score a teacher was concerned because the unit assessments scores were stagnant. And those unit assessments mirrored what the AP tests looked like. So we worked together to evaluate those assessments, looking at error patterns, looking at wording, and we made some changes. In subsequent, uh, in subsequent exam, the student test scores increased by a change of seventeen percent. Another recent cycle was with an English teacher who really wanted her students to be the ones making the meaning and discussing the ideas around the text that they were reading, rather than just the teacher asking a question and a student answering, and then the next student answers. She really wanted them to interact with one another. So we put in place a series of discussion strategies, first starting with an online forum. So one gives up so they have the idea of sharing their ideas out in a space, in the classroom community, and then we move to in-person discussions. And really, before that, students were not taking ownership of the, the, the flow of discussion around the ideas in the class. So they have minimal to no opportunities, and we move to multiple opportunities daily. Another fantastic, I am definitely biased, um, professional learning opportunity in District Two Eleven is our in-district courses. And I've been an in-district course instructor for the past several years, really enjoying that cross-district collaboration that occurs as a result of taking class. Also a great, uh, reveal of cross-time collaboration. Um, and so participants can choose what course they would like to engage in. So we've had courses on, on social-emotional learning strategies, differentiated instruction, and both studies, as was mentioned earlier. Um, one of the current classes is a deeper dive into the CRT practice, really helping our educators, our participants, go deeper and get some feedback on, um, their deliverables in the classroom with regard to CRT. And in this recent book study, this particular book study focused on the science of how we learn, but gave educators an opportunity to take that learning science and assess how they were teaching compared to what the, uh, the research said. So these are two of my very favorite, um, professional learning opportunities in the district. So thank you for letting me share them with you.
As a department chair, I have seen PLTs of professional learning teams from both the chair and teacher perspectives. As Josh mentioned in the first part of our presentation, our departments are split into learning teams, and these teams are given time to collaborate during early morning work sessions and professional development days. As department chairs, we are the instructional leaders of our departments. This demands that we evaluate current conditions and actively seek out solutions to any of the issues that may arise. Checking in with PLT leaders provides the opportunity to get an accurate overview of student performance and curricular concerns, or to identify curricular areas that need to be further investigated. PLTs provide the opportunity for collaboration and rich conversation that, in many cases, leads to some curricular adjustments and improvements. Some subject areas have their PLTs arranged by specific courses, for example, an American history PLT or a biology PLT, and this is effective for those departments. As chairs, World Language came together and determined that we needed to organize our PLTs differently to maximize the time that we had been given. For elective subject areas, it is customary for one teacher to teach multiple different courses. Because of this, being a member of a PLT for every course taught would create an impossible situation of not enough time to actively participate in every PLT or too much time in between PLT meetings that the teacher was a member of. So to mitigate this issue, World Language decided to put our PLTs together by language and level instead. So we have a lower level Spanish, for example. There's a Spanish one or two teachers in it. There's a level three and four PLTs that have Spanish teachers. And World Language also has a district-wide French and a district-wide German PLT. So that structure allows for much richer conversation at our PLT meetings. Setting PLTs up by level has also allowed for conversation about vertical alignment, uh, which essentially is asking, do our students know what they need to know at the end of one level to successfully move on to the next? We are able to make sure that there is appropriate overlap for the skills required for success in a World Language classroom. For example, during this extraordinary school year, our PLTs have been using a document that helps us address potential learning gaps or gaps that may have occurred. This document has a stoplight structure. So green represents the materials that we covered in depthly, um, and highly prioritized and taught completely. Yellow is areas that were covered but perhaps not as, at the same depth as they may have previously been. And red represents areas that we will need to focus on and review during the following school year. For a deeper understanding of the teacher perspective, I'm going to walk you through a typical PLT meeting. Every PLT meeting is similarly functioning. The key is having a clear agenda and making sure to dive deeply into the data of various assessments and our coursework to answer the following question. Where do our students excel? Where did our students struggle? Are there methods that we can share what worked, what didn't? And then are there any adjustments that need to be made? As we answer these questions, we make adjustments where necessary based on the data that we are analyzing. As a specific example, during this unprecedented remote learning time, World Language in prioritizing our curriculum, which previously was mentioned by Isaiah, has pivoted to offering many more performance-based assessments, allowing our students to show us what they know in action instead of the traditional paper and pencil test. This shift was due to the many conversations that were had within PLTs looking at the data that showed us that our students were struggling to perform well within the traditional format. Without PLT conversation, any given teacher would wonder if it were just their students. The safety of having a PLT to evaluate and analyze data helps drive our curriculum decision.
During the course of this presentation, we have looked at curriculum development and professional learning beginning at the classroom and department level, with Mr. Sanchez described how we implemented new state standards in our science classrooms. We then heard from Mr. Langer about school-wide professional learning, and Mr. Nathan, and how the classroom teacher implements and operationalizes the new knowledge that comes from those experiences. Ms. Morelli described two of the most impactful opportunities that staff could take advantage of across the district, instructional coaching and in-district courses. And finally, Ms. Parkman shared information about how our staff collaborate together in PLTs, both within schools and across the district. We want to conclude tonight by talking about the overall district organizational structure that facilitates all facets of the instructional process, the curriculum committee. District Two Eleven has a robust, multi-tiered procedure for curriculum development and modification. These processes begin at the classroom level but are ultimately approved by the curriculum committee. This committee consists of eleven members for each academic department and is made up of school department chairs, school principals, and the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction. The committee from each academic department meets three times each year to ensure that our curriculum remains dynamic and relevant in both scope and sequence. As the Board of Education, you receive the minutes of these meetings, which represent all of the development and modification across our district. Both our curriculum development and professional learning opportunities are ongoing efforts to ensure that our teaching and learning opportunities are relevant and rigorous. Each department analyzes specific course curriculum on a regular basis in addition to reviewing textbooks, software, and other instructional materials. Any major change is proposed to the curriculum committee's rigorous review process, and ultimately, if recommended, presented to the District Two Eleven Board of Education for approval. Tonight, we focus on what we have accomplished over this year and previous years related to curriculum changes and professional learning experience. We also want to preview our upcoming work, which will continue into the summer and fall as we return to a more traditional school model. We plan to continue our conversations and work about equity. We plan to focus on rigor and relevance of our curriculum, and we know that our students will need even higher levels of social-emotional support as we have all coped differently during the pandemic. We appreciate your engagement and attention this evening as we have attempted to explain both the complicated process and our comprehensive approach to curriculum development and professional learning. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I've got some questions.
Before we begin, Christine, if you could switch lights around so I can, we can see. And turn the projector off. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, one, one of the things that we've been hearing about from students over the past several board meetings, and I've followed up with students, um, to get more detail about, is, uh, an inconsistent delivery of our wellness curriculum. And students have said that they've found it to be inconsistent, not just within the same building. So for example, if they get a certain teacher at one of our schools who feels very comfortable with the material and delivers that, our curriculum in one way, and then they get another teacher who's obviously much less comfortable with that same material and then delivers it in the form of a packet. You know, that's obviously very inconsistent, but then those students say that it's also inconsistent between schools. So when they talk with their peers from other District Two Eleven schools, there seems to be graduating levels of the same sort of inconsistency that these students are unhappy about. That's one of the things that they've been speaking to us about. So, hearing their comments in the back of my mind, and then going through the presentation, it seems like these structures that we have in place, these professional learning teams, are, one of their big jobs is to prevent such inconsistency, both within our buildings and between our buildings. So, you know, I'm not chasing up to find, like, why is, why is this structure not necessarily working, at least according to what these students have shared with us and with me? Um, I'm more interested in the broader question of, if these, if these institutions that we have exist to promote consistency, exactly how much leeway then are individual teachers given to, uh, shift delivery of a standardized curriculum within their classrooms? So, um, how do professional learning teams, to put in a more practical example, address that one teacher, for example, might want to deliver our curriculum in the form of a packet, and another teacher wants to deliver it in the form of interactive activities? You know, how does that work with our professional learning team structure we have in place?
So in terms of, uh, if I can directly address the wellness issue, which is what you brought up, um, there are a couple of components that we've heard from our students. And as we have always said, we always work to improve. So I'm not trying to defend anything, uh, that has been said, but, um, the wellness program is brand-new. It is in its second year of working through our sophomore curriculum. And many of the students that spoke to us spoke about their health class. So there were some consistencies within their health class, there are consistencies with their wellness class, and when we talk about presenting a brand-new course from a brand-new curriculum at the high school level in District Two Eleven, we have never been fans of purchasing a canned curriculum and throwing it in front of our students. Um, we are, we are, uh, very adept at being creative, at understanding what our students' needs and making those changes along the way.
If they continue to improve the curriculum along the way, if we were to wait to watch a class for it to be perfect, we'd never want to.
And, and that's not what I'm, um, asking. I'm, I'm asking, you know, especially in light of a new curriculum, for example, then what is the responsibility of professional learning teams? How exactly does a professional learning team try to promote consistency within any curriculum, be it new or existing? And I want to know, I want to get a sense for, for what the leeway is. You know, for an individual teacher, I've got follow-up questions about that too. But if I could just get a general answer about professional learning teams' impact on consistency of instruction, both within the building and between buildings, because that's something that's been brought up several times through the course of the presentation. That's what I'm asking for.
Sure, you spoke to this briefly. And can you speak to, in terms of, when your World Language teachers come together? And what data do they look at to see whether their students are moving forward as expected? And because they're not, why they're sharing their practices?
So I think the, the, the whole, simplest, probably, most practical answer to that is, um, and we actually just went through a, a recently meeting curriculum in World Language as well, right? And so what we did was the assessments that the, the textbook provided for us, those were the facts that we discussed first. Right? Because you don't know if it works or if it doesn't work until after you've actually attempted to implement. Um, each teacher is going to do things in their personality, for lack of a better way to say that, but the material still remains the same. Right? So the message that students are getting is going to be the same because it's following along with the curriculum.
If I could, if that answers your... I appreciate that. I'm sorry, it's a little bit...
No, no.
Um, we do have, I can add, we do have common assessments that are across every course.
Okay.
So if, and our, our teachers, that's what we hire teachers to do. We hire teachers to make creative instructional choices depending upon their students in front of them and how those students are interacting with the curriculum. So a teacher who teaches the exact same class two periods may approach them differently just because of how the kids are interacting with the curriculum. Now, having said that, the end goal, which is their performance on our common assessments, that's where they have to come together, and that's where the accountability faces. So we hire teachers to make instructional choices to get them to be capable of curriculum. Our curriculum is common because of the common assessments and the common critical standards or, and/or the common textbook, that they base it on.
I appreciate that. I mean, I'm a teacher myself, I know how this goes. You know, you, there's a significant portion of teaching that is responding on the fly, and, um, minor teams, you might deliver activities in different ways in different classes depending on the student's behavior response. Absolutely. I'm just trying to get a sense for how that works with our professional learning teams that are trying to also promote integration across our buildings and our districts. So that's what I'm trying to understand. Uh, so my second question, when standards change, so when we have a change, either, you know, handed down to the state or from whatever authority, when, uh, do teachers get new curriculum materials to input, to meet those standards? Or is it largely adapting the existing materials to meet the new standards? Or is it a combination of both?
It's the first one that you mentioned. In, in Mr. Sanchez's example of the next-generation science standards when those came about, it was a full, um, three-hundred-and-sixty-degree look at not only what we teach in light of those new standards, but the ways in which we teach it. So the software we use, the textbooks that we use, the instructional materials. And I would say for, for certain departments like science, it's also the equipment that we had and need, uh, to do those new topics that are in there. So it's a full three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view of all components, of all the content, and the way it is done.
That's good. So if teachers, um, express the need for further supplemental materials in order to successfully meet the new standard, they're certainly able to bring that to their department chairs and pass it up to the relevant authority.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, uh, forgive me, um, just went, oh, there was my former question. When, when standards change, then, um, you know, you've answered your question about curriculum materials, do then assessments change as well?
Correct.
Yeah.
The three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view would be the, the assessments would need to change as well. And so when we talk about the curriculum committee, that's really the mode of the teachers and their PLTs would look at revising the assessor, and they would, uh, reporter recommended to their chair would bring it to the curriculum committee. It would be analyzed, uh, to make sure it's all of the components of the common, what the common assessment needs, and then would be adopted and recommended through the curriculum.
So there's that consistency component, right?
Absolutely.
Perfect. And then, um, in reference to those previous two questions about adoption of, you know, adaptation of provision of new curriculum materials and then adaptation of assessments, like how quickly of a turnaround would be? Or how, how, how quickly does that process unfold? Like, you know, what's the turnaround?
So I would say in general, for a major curriculum change like the one described, when we're, when we're completely changing how we do something from the critical learning standards to the assessment, that's the year-long process with the summer before and the summer after. Because just the nature of what has to change, the nature of the research, and the nature of the conversations that we need to have to, to really do it, um, at an impactful level.
Okay. And then my next question is, you know, in my personal life, some, I, I do provide professional development to teachers. And as part of my professional development, I provide classroom activities that teachers can then take away and use in their classrooms if they think that. So assuming that our, our teachers are afforded the same opportunity, you know, you were talking about all conferences and all the training opportunities that we provide are just excellent. Um, going back to that initial question, I'm trying to get a sense of, let's say I'm a science teacher and I go to a conference and I attend the workshop at that conference and I'm given three new excellent classroom activities that I really, really want to try. Am I able to do that without asking anybody else? Or do I have to take those materials and then ask my department chair? You know, I'm trying to get a sense of, like, where, where the fence is.
Sure. And so I would say, uh, as Dr. Small described earlier, and I'll put it in the context of the instructional cycle that we had at the beginning, one of the beginning slides, where the critical learning standards are the same, so you're not going to modify one of those.
Right.
Those have to go to the curriculum committee. The assessments are the same, those always have to go. But that middle part that defines my students, I need to reach and, and teach this critical learning standard, but I can do it in ways A, B, or C. And so if I find a, a better way, I go to a conference and I find D, I'm going to come back and try it, and I'm either going to come back first and talk to my PLT about it, or I'm going to come back and say, I'm going to try this, and then I'm going to take it to my PLT afterward. And when we're having a conversation about, was A more effective? Was B more effective? And when we're having a conversation about was A more effective, was B more effective? Hey, I just learned this D and then look at what happened. And look at what happened in my student achievement data that we're all looking at. And so then it becomes a conversation of, is that something that the teachers should implement? That new method that we learned? And so that's typically how it happens.
That's good. I mean, you can put that to think that, you know, this exponentially benefits any one individual teacher's professional development opportunity. So that's fantastic to hear. And then my last question was pertaining to the instructional, instructional coaching segment of the presentation. How are teachers and teams identified for this, this services practice?
So it is, at this time it's voluntary, but we also kind of have it woven into a variety of different staffs. So people, when they're writing the professional tactics book, are highly encouraged to put instructional coaching in as part of their professional practice. Department chairs often refer individuals and PLTs for instructional coaching. And then there's just our people that just like to keep coming out. They'll do five cycles for the year.
So you said you're one of six, right?
Yes, one in each building.
Okay. Is, is there a waitlist for this kind of service or do we seem to be adequately resourced?
Well, if I had a budget one.
Well, yeah.
You know, we could definitely employ two coaches in each building easily. Because we also work, you know, not just with teachers, but anybody that has contacted students, so we work with people in student services. So as far as the waitlist, each cycle is very individualized. So the amount of time you spend on one versus another. I wouldn't say there's a waitlist. Sometimes during the busy time, I might say like, I can't see you. It's Tuesday, but I can't see you till next Tuesday. Just depends on the track.
Okay. And then, so do you also then work with psychologists?
Yeah, so I, I know that if I have, so I'll just speak to my own personal experience. Yeah, in working with groups with students. Anybody that we can create a student-centered goal with for really improving student outcomes. Worked with counselors, you know, gosh, even teacher assistants in like group approaches and building professional development for them as well.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Alina didn't mention they're also interwoven with our new teacher program. They spend a lot of time with our instructional coaches.
Oh, not in your years and then we, we continue to follow them. And I love it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. I was very pleased to see that our use, to see our use of social emotional learning strategies and culturally responsive teaching as well as trauma responsive strategies. So I'm going to say some things and it's going to be a little long, but I apologize. In order for students to learn, lessons must not be only be purposeful, but be meaningful as well. Wenderly Cartlidge and Lucky Coria wrote in their article about culturally and linguistically diverse students that the one-size-fits-all approach is not a viable option for increasing the achievement of CLD students. A need exists for differentiated and intensified instruction with a clear understanding of the most critical skills to teach, the most effective teaching methods to employ, and methods of consistently assessing the progress of these students. If students are unable to relate to lesson materials, they are less likely to be engaged or care about the content. Teachers must be aware and recognize the differences within their classrooms and adhere to them by integrating diversity into their lessons. Students have all different backgrounds, home lives, and experiences that cannot be ignored. Experiencing students, I'm sorry, extracting students to separate their home life from school is an inappropriate expectation for educators to have. And the reality is that students bring these different backgrounds with them to class every day. Informing educators about trauma-informed care is one step to close the achievement gap and building better relationships with students. Additionally, recognizing that this type of work takes a team is important. Traumatic events can affect students on a day-to-day basis in ways that others may not think of. Keeping this in mind, while teaching is important in order to understand student responses to content. Similarly, implementing lessons and content using trauma-responsive practices is challenging. However, it is one of the most important elements. Enforcing and carrying out these practices will lead to more compassionate classrooms, better student outcomes, and a higher rate of overall happiness and safety throughout the educational environment. Students have all different lives, backgrounds, and experiences. So utilizing their knowledge and embracing them only makes our educational setting even stronger. So I thank you all for your leadership efforts in this area.
Any other comments or questions? I would like to add a thank you for, for giving of your time to come here this evening and sharing your talents with your fellow peers and letting the board know exactly what, what you're doing with the curriculum and how it's grown and how it's developed. Mr. Rosenbluh pointed out some things that you indicated we're doing and that is absolutely tremendous. All the creativity you're able to do. This has been a difficult year for everyone. And especially with trying to do hybrid with, with all of our students that has to be, you know, you've been amazing in regards to that. Hopefully going into the fall, it's going to be a little bit easier. But I, I know that you're going to still maintain the rigor and especially getting our students who have fallen behind back to where they need to be. So thank you very much. I know last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. We need to always continue appreciating our teachers and our staff. It was Nurses Week and we couldn't do it without our nurses and everything that they were able to do. So again, I, I want to thank you for sharing your time and talent with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time then, we'll move on to our consent agenda. And because not all board members were present at the April 29th, 2021 Regular Board Meeting, Board of Education meeting, a separate motion on approval of the minutes of those meetings is represented. So the first motion, suggested motion is that the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 29th, 2021 be approved as presented. Roll call please. Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbluh.
Aye.
Mrs. Klenkowitz.
Aye.
And the second suggested motion is that the minutes of the regular meeting of April 29th, 2021 be approved and placed on file. Roll call please. Mr. Bradley. Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Was there a second to the motion? No. If you have one.
I apologize.
Are either motion valid without a second?
That's, that's my error. I apologize.
Thank you.
I need a motion, please. Guys have to speak up a little faster. All right. Do I have a, do I have a motion for? Where did he go? I don't know. I'm going back there again. Okay. First motion, the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 29th, 2021 be approved as presented.
So moved.
Questions? Okay. Now roll call. Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbluh.
Aye.
Mrs. Klenkowitz.
Aye.
All right. And the second motion, suggested motion is that the minutes of the regular meeting of April 29th, 2021 be approved and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please. Mr. Bradley. Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbluh.
Aye.
Mrs. Klenkowitz.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. The next item is information, the Freedom of Information Act request. There's no questions?
Just a point of clarification. If we voted to remove the minutes, then we voted on the minutes, did we vote on the consent agenda minus the minutes?
No, that was, that was the motion. Hang on a second, let me get back to it. We did, that the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes be, be taken. So we did vote on the consent agenda.
We voted to remove item A from the consent agenda. Then we voted on item A outside of the consent agenda, which was approved with two abstains. And now I believe we have to take an action on the consent agenda minus part A. Correct?
Actually, I read that the first motion was to approve the consent agenda with the removal.
Okay, got it. All right, I misunderstood. I thought we were motioning to remove it. Got it.
No, that one, I, I know I read that clearly.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no questions on the Freedom of Information Act request, then we'll move on to the 2020-2021 school year update. And this is for information and any discussion. Dr. Small.
I can give a quick review of what's on the agenda in the attachment. Our summer school, our summer advancement program are moving forward. As a reminder, our summer school has our credit-bearing courses as well as our athletic activity camps. And our advancement program is for students to connect to our schools with our teachers, doing some unique non-credit-bearing connections in order to kind of bridge through the summer. Our students are moving, are, we're moving our courses to more young person that will be coming out next week. And certainly students and families who have other concerns can work with the schools individually. And we'll set up some different scenarios for them in order to meet their needs along the way. Our graduation ceremonies are set for both our, for our indoor events at the NOW Arena. There's also outdoor viewing available at the NOW Arena should someone have additional guests or want to be outside for that consideration. In terms of our student COVID vaccinations, we have a vaccination clinic in partnership with Juul OSKO that's occurring on May 20. Our communications department has set up a website in order for parents to go to to find any vaccination sites, that whether they be a part of a sponsorship by District 211 or if they're community events, anytime we receive those, we also post those up there. I would like to take a moment to thank Juul OSKO. They have been a wonderful partner for us in terms of both this vaccination clinic that's coming out as well as the previous one that we did out of Palatine High School and Shawbrook High School. They have already said that if this current clinic fills, they are ready to support us with another one. And that is for our students that are 12-year-old in the District 211 community. Our 2021-2022 school scheduling is moving forward. We have the traditional schedule that is presented in March to the Board of Education and that is continuing on. The schools have already made plans that should, for some reason, we have to maintain six-foot distancing at lunch. They have devised multiple areas where they can make this happen. Our next step is they will partner with our food and nutrition services to plan for how we can do more than just a grab-and-go lunch. So we are trying to very creatively be prepared for that scenario should we find ourselves in that scenario when we get to the fall. When the ISPE and the IPH present any information on the 2021-2022 school year, it will be presented to the Board of Education. There is the expectation that they will be presenting information. There is no indication that it's only going to be received.
Questions surrounding graduations? As we all know, the CDC came out today and said if you're, if you're fully vaccinated, no masks, no social distancing. Is that going to be incorporated in the graduation ceremonies? There's two of them.
So we, Josh, you there?
I am here.
The NOW Arena has been very gracious in terms of setting up the safety protocols that they would expect us to follow. And I'm not sure we've had that conversation with them yet, have we?
That just happened today. So no, we have not had the conversation on whether they're going to relax any of the current policies that they have in place. And so right now we're following them, although we are following up with them on a weekly basis. So we will have that conversation.
No, I understand that. It is fast-moving, but there's not much time to adjust, if it's possible. It may affect you too. What was the, what was the response from the, from the community about the number of students and their families that wanted to attend?
Very few families replied no to the survey of whether or not you were going to attend. I don't have the exact number.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Very few families responded no that they are not going to attend. So I don't have the exact numbers in front of me from each school, but the information from the schools is that the majority of the students and families will attend. Or have, I guess I should say, have indicated that they plan to attend.
So 95%?
I would not want to guess, but that could be a fair, that could be a fair number.
What is the, what is the current policy for ticket allocation?
The NOW Arena has currently given us the six tickets per family.
Okay, thank you.
What is it normally for family?
I can, I can only speak to Hopkins State High School. I apologize. We had a different facility for Hopkins State High School last year when it peaked.
And then another high school last year that NOW Arena was.
So we're in pretty good shape at the time.
And, and if a, a large family wants to come in two cars, one car can go to the outdoor arena. I mean, I'm sorry, outdoor parking lot where they can see it live and walk with the graduates when they come out and read them. There's a, there's a lot that happens in our, in our graduations that happen outside the facility before they come in. Because when they come into the facility, they are separated. Parents and the students go different ways. So they, they start outside, they go through the graduation ceremony, and they meet outside again.
Where is the vaccine clinic on May 20? Do we now have a, have a connection?
Okay.
Dr. Small, are we still meeting regularly with Cook County Department of Health?
Yes, every week. Mr. Korak and I are on the phone with them. Just had it this morning.
Okay. So then with the change in the mask mandate from the CDC and potentially from the state, we will be looking for direction from the county or implementing direction from the state? Or will we just follow the CDC guidance on this?
So we follow the IPH and the County Department of Health.
Yes, I, Mr. Dombrowski, perhaps you missed it. Pritzer made an announcement that says, it said, I'm following what the president says. Okay, follow the signs. So it looks like it's already a motion to, to make some pretty significant changes.
Right. And it's a valid point, Mr. Kramer. But yet the, the city of Chicago, the county, and the state have varying guidelines during the bridge program. So I guess my clarification would be of the, if the two agencies you mentioned, Dr. Small, are in conflict, would we be following the county or the state mentioned in that?
I'll bring that to you. Because you directed this in confidence.
Thank you.
Dr. Small, can we touch on parades for a moment?
Sure.
I know I touched on it last month or the month before. So I know in an earlier update to us as board members, you let us know that there are plans for parades and that there are some differences between them. Have you heard anything from the parents or others in the community regarding anything with relations to those differences?
I have not.
Okay. And is there any planned parade or similar program planned for the Higgins Education Center?
There is.
Can you share that with us in a board letter?
I can't. Thank you. I have the date and the time. It was just given to me today. I can add that. I have, absolutely.
Thank you.
There was a parade, what was it called?
The Higgins Education Center.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that in the question.
It was not the Higgins Education. And so she just found that out.
Do you want to touch upon that maybe a little bit for the, for our board members to know what we're talking about? Absolutely. So last year, our schools were very creative in ways that we could celebrate with our seniors for the class of tone. And they started these parades that they do. And this year, they decided with the positive response that they got last year, that they will continue those on. They were the board level that was sent to you. You are more than welcome to go to any of the parades that you'd like to. And if you just let us know, we'll give the schools a heads-up that you're coming so that we can be just fine. Any other questions? If not, I would like to add on to the, to the update. April 30th, we had an amazing presentation by panel presentation from the students from Conan High School. And I really want to thank the students because they've come here for the last couple of months and they shared an awareness with us. It was in regards to sexual harassment, sexual assault, and sexual awareness. They, they came and they shared the problem with us. They worked with fellow students and with staff to do a panel presentation. And I'm not certain how many were able to, to watch that. But I thought it was well-formatted, it was, it was well-executed. It was facilitated by the students, but they worked with staff and administration to put that on. And I think that that was, that was important. The panel presentation consisted of a representative from Northwest Casa who provided definitions of sexual assault, awareness. And she was just very energetic. And we've worked with Northwest Casa for a number of years, and they're, they're available to us. The second presenter was a young lady, Erin Merron. And Erin is the one who fought for Aaron's Law. And Aaron's Law became effective in September of 2013. And what that was, it's, well, what that is, it's a curriculum and a presentation that goes to all students from K through 12. And they talk about, in age-appropriate language to students about sexual awareness, sexual assault. And Erin had stated that it's, she now has that law in 37 states. And she's working with the other states to get it passed. And one of the important things that Erin shared, she shared her story. And she was a student here in our area. And she went through a really difficult time. But when she was in high school, there was a psychologist, and her name is Jeanette Ardell, who is currently over at Conan High School. But Jeanette helped her find her voice after struggling for many years. I think the important part there is to understand that there are teachers and their staff that are willing to help, but we have to, you know, help our students reach out. One of the things that Erin had stated was every student needs to identify five safe people that they can talk to. And that's kind of that level of support that they really need. So they did a tremendous job. There was also a young person from Kenneth Young Center that participated. There was an attorney who provided some legal perspectives. And I think what was important is our students identify the problem, and they're working on outcomes. And I think that that's really important. Awareness was one of the things that I took away from it of sexual assault. And sharing of knowledge is kind of the first step that I, that I see. And I really look forward to our students and staff sharing more outcomes. The panel presentation, to my understanding, is being shown to the students over at Conan. And I think it's really powerful, it's very good. And one of the things that I've learned along the way is, you know, when you have outcomes, they bring into being our intentions. And I think our wellness committee is going to be part of this also where we're talking about the physical well-being, the emotional well-being, and social well-being of our students. So I think looking forward to more outcomes is, is amazing. And I'm really proud of our students and our staff. They were able to do a, just a great presentation. So thank you for letting me share.
I agree. It was a very special opportunity for our students to put something like that together and to communicate in such a fashion. I know it was recorded, and I'm sure, you know, anybody here on this board would like to view it. And I'm sure, you know, we can get to that link, and you can watch it. Like Mrs. Kunklewitz said, it was, it was inspiring, it was educational, it was thoughtful. And for those who participated, I think it was very helpful as well. And to continue giving that message and communicating in such a way, not even just through that panel and that program, but in other ways now and going forward, I think is very important. So I also thank and congratulate everybody that was involved with putting that program together.
Thank you. We'll next move on to District 211 team equity report. Dr. Small?
We're nearing the end of our first year of our journey. And the report does give an update in terms of the feedback we received in phase one from the young associates. And we look forward to the presentation that will be coming in due from the District 211 Equity Team to the board.
Are there any questions? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to the next item, which is our Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award and its out informations.
Congratulations to Lauren Hummel and her team. This is an award for their transparency in accounting. And they certainly have done an excellent job of this and have consistently won this award now for a few years.
Thank you and congratulations.
Ms. Kunklewitz, may I request a five-minute recess?
I think you're fine.
May I request a five-minute recess, please?
Okay. We can have a take a recess for five minutes. All right, thank you. Okay, so we're back in session. And the next item is the board liaison. Thank you to everyone for volunteering for numerous positions. Truly appreciate it. Had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Small and do the assignments, looking at your strengths and your abilities. And thank you for volunteering to be on the various committees. The next item then.
What's the status of Budget Finance Committee?
Well, the, no one wanted to, it was not an item marked...
I volunteered.
I know you did afterwards, and...
There seemed to be a need.
Pardon me?
There seemed to be a need.
I don't think so. And the reason being, and after talking with some of the board members in regards to it, we get our presentation, excuse me. The committee had been meeting. The presentation was put on by Ms. Hummel and Ms. Peterson. And then the same presentation was given to us here at our board meetings. There's a lot of work that's involved and into it. And we have the same presentation. So it kind of became a little bit redundant.
Hi, Mr. Prick. There's a lot of detail in there. This is a three, this is a $30 billion organization. And I think that the due diligence requires that we do have a committee and that we do go over the same material twice. There is a lot of detail that, that, and that comes out after taking a look, after hearing a presentation and a committee meeting, and then later on, a board meeting.
And what?
I disagree, I disagree with that.
And, and that's your prerogative. We have our board package that comes to us. We have the opportunity of calling Ms. Hummel, calling our superintendent, getting more information prior to our board meetings. So when we do have a board presentation here, we can discuss it. We can get the information with all of the board members that are here. If there's an item that really needs more time and expertise or more involvement, we certainly can schedule a special meeting. But there, there was not a desire to have a, a committee.
I think, I think that's a rule of state. A third of a billion-dollar organization.
And that is why it is so important that when you get your board package, you read it, you take a look at it, and you ask the questions. And then here, when we're all together, all seven of us, we all hear that same question and that information. I think that's really powerful.
Which comes out, which has come out from the committee meetings in the last two years. Okay, it's your decision, I believe it's wrong. And it will, it will raise its head.
I'm sorry, what, what did you just say?
I said it's a wrong decision. And the, the lack of having a committee meeting will raise its head. I guarantee.
Are there any other comments?
As I understand it, no one at all followed the year before the committee meeting?
Well, and there's, there's something else about the, the Budget Finance Committee. And that is, it was a special board committee. And special board committees have to have a very specific purpose. And once that purpose is completed, then that special board committee will be dissolved. And as Mrs. Kunklewitz said, the purpose of that committee is actually being met here in the boardroom. And the fact that we do get that information in advance, and if you have questions regarding the information, including the presentation that we actually get a copy of, then you are able to meet with administrators from the business department to review and ask questions, even individually, in preparation for coming to the board meeting and asking those questions.
Makes sense to me. Okay, if there's no other questions, then we'll move on. And the next is the Consolidated District Grant Plan. And there is a recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the 2021-2022 Consolidated District Plans as presented and authorize the superintendent to submit the plan as required on the behalf of Township High School District 211. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Kunklewitz?
Aye.
Dr. Small, is there something that you would to share in regards to this one with us? The district grant plan? Mm-hmm. That is a summary of the items that we will present to the ISBE in regard to the Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and the IDEA grant. That summary is on the document. Thank you. The next item is the Supreme Curriculum Committee Report. And the recommendation, recommended action is that the curriculum committee report and recommendations be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion on it? Are there any questions?
All materials on this was passed through the process?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, if there's no questions, then roll call, please. Mr. Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Kunklewitz?
Aye.
The next item is the Summer Curriculum Projects. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the Summer Curriculum Projects at a cost not to exceed the following per grant. Title I, $88,700. Title II, $125,600. IDEA, $23,100. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay, any questions in regards to the Summer Curriculum Project?
Are these curriculum projects inclusive of new curriculum material or is it a separate?
They may be developing new or investigating new, but if it does come through at the end of the summer, it goes through the formal curriculum process starting in the fall and then comes back to the board every fall, which is the original report.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, roll call, please. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Kunklewitz?
Aye.
And the next item is the Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization Budget. And the recommended motion would be that the Board of Education ratifies the NSSEO amended 2020-2021 annual budget, ratifies the NSSEO proposed 2021-2022 annual budget, and agrees to pay the district's proportionate share of the proposed budget revenues. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any questions in regards?
What's our share?
In terms of the tuition or the budget?
Well, there's two different ones. What is, what is our fair share of subsidizing NSSEO?
Okay, so we pay tuition for each student, and it's on a student-by-student basis. So whatever our enrollment, potential enrollment is, is okay. And I have Renee Erickson, our Director of Special Ed, Mark Peterson, who's involved with the budgeting, and can explain that there's a base enrollment that we pay per student, and then there's additional fees if they have any supplemental services such as one-to-one TAs or medical services. So it's unique by student.
So what, I understand it's, it's on tuition-based. Is there, what is, what is a, an estimated dollar?
Per student or total?
A total.
It's, it's in the board package. And it is, the, the total District 211 charge is $3,746,245. And it is a decrease because we have fewer students. Most of our students, all of our students are over at Kirk School. We do have some deaf and hard-of-hearing students that we have to pay a cost for them. There's an attachment called the NSSEO Budget Chart, as what Mrs. Kunklewitz is referencing. The NSSEO Budget Chart has our proportionate share.
Okay. I did have a question. So the, even though our, our overall cost is decreasing, the, the per student tuition is, is increasing here for students that's Kirk and at on Hershey High School. So, you know, do we know why that tuition is going up?
I'm trying. Okay. But it's what you're saying, really, is that we can do, obviously, increase the TAF salary and expenses incurred by the per, of per student.
Renee, could you just briefly explain the difference between why we send students to Hershey versus students that would be remaining within the co-op at Kirk or mine?
Yeah, so it's actually, the NSSEO Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program is housed at Hershey High School. So it kind of looks and feels like they are Hershey High School students, but in fact, they continue to be 211 students. And it's anywhere from students who are, you know, fully deaf or have other needs along that line. And our students at Kirk School tend to be more involved in terms of medical needs, having intellectual disabilities, you know, more complex, maybe autism, and really what their needs are exceed what we can offer within the district.
Thank you. We also provide, have other services, itinerary services, the ability to use the outdoor education at Sunrise, technical assistance. Some of it covers the professional development, diagnostics and educational services, sort of variety of services that, that are provided also to, to the students and to some of our students here also.
And just for the benefit of the community, you know, the increases that we're talking about, 2.26%, as an example, 2.84%, you know, increased tuition costs. But that's paid for by us. That's not, that's not paid for by any sort of family. Am I right in understanding that? So we're recording that cost?
Correct. One of the requirements under the Federal Individuals and Disabilities Education Act is access to a free and appropriate public education, so at their local public school.
Wonderful. Yep. Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions or further clarification that might be needed? If not, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kunklewitz?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is an action item also. And this is that the Board of Education authorized Township High School District 211 to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with North... to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Northwest Education Council for Student Success, a partnership committed to college and career readiness with other qualified and participating school districts to provide career and technical education opportunities for each district's students. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. And questions? And Dr. Small?
If I may, I'd like to introduce Nancy Jechek. She is our Executive Director for the Northwest Educational Council for Student Success, which we call NEXUS. She's been with us now for a few years. I've worked with her every year that she's been with us in the multiple roles that I've had. She has the pleasure of bringing together 211, 214, 220, and Harper College to the same table and making sure that we are all moving forward with our decisions in terms of the career opportunities that we put forward for our students. Much of the dual credit work that you hear is our connections to Harper College and is through our NEXUS organization that we have an open communication line with Harper in terms of the dual credit opportunities. And Nancy Jechek is a part of that communication. So I thank you, Nancy, for being here tonight and thank you for the work that you do behind the scenes to make sure that we all communicate very smoothly across our region.
Does anyone have any questions of Dr. Small? If there are no questions, roll call, please. Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Kunklewit?
Aye.
All right, we move on to the next couple of items. Deal with consideration of several different topics. Some of these were items that Mr. Dombrowski had brought forward last week. And before we get into those, and letter K, excuse me, letter L, talks about potential topics for future discussions. And that was where all of these were brought forward. We do have an agenda format, and I just want to touch upon that first before we get into these. When we look at the potential topics, that was on our board policy, VDDV. And the request is that if you're going to bring a topic forward, what we have in our policy reads, "An intention to request a potential addition to the future board meeting agenda item will be shared with the board president and or superintendent before a board meeting and may then be raised for consideration by a board member at a board meeting in open session under the agenda item, potential topics for future discussion." A majority of the board will agree in open session before putting in an item on the future board meeting agenda and before significant staff time is expended. I know we did spend quite a bit of time in talking about this and we probably did not handle it as best we should have. And I apologize for that because I should have brought it up at that time. But we do have these items. We did put them on the agenda. And we'll take a look at them. I ask that we be considerate of one another's opinions and that we also be considerate of staff time. So the first item is potential consideration of policy review by the Policy Committee. You've got some policies listed here. And I'll begin the discussion by suggesting that these do go to the Policy Committee, form review, and then the Policy Committee can bring it back for a first reading and then a second reading. Okay, if that's agreeable, then these will be brought to the Policy Committee.
What is that, what is that usually mean?
Well, we need to set up a time, or a date. Usually, you can't be legal facilitated getting us together. And we need it in the morning, usually about seven or eight. We'll have a meeting set up for next week. We have two, at least one, if not two, policies outside of these that need to be reviewed by the Policy Committee.
Yeah, okay. I'm on a committee, but I don't know what my, you know, not knowing what it was going to be, you know, I'll try to be there, but I don't know.
All right, we think we can talk about the time after the meeting.
It would be, I would recommend that there be a set schedule, the third Thursday of the month or whatever, instead of an ad hoc scheduling of a committee get to work. If we don't need it, if we don't need to have it, then we just don't. But we'll talk about it.
Okay, because sometimes there's flexibility and sometimes we may need to have a meeting at a different time or at an earlier date.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I completely agree. The only specific that I would request the Policy Committee address is the reporting requirement for the social media policy, GBAD.
Can you restate that? I have problems here.
The only specific point that I'd like to draw attention to for the Policy Committee is the reporting requirement on the social media policy, GBAD.
Okay. All right, the next item is, this one was the Strategic Plan. Dr. Small, do you want to touch on that one right now?
Sure, absolutely. So our current strategic plan will be pending, coming up this fall in 2021. And I would suggest that, well, after we have, there's a series of information that's coming forth to the board that I think that would be important for them to consider as we look forward to planning the new strategic plan. One of them is our equity report that is coming in June. A second part of that would be the Phase II, the Young and Associates information that's coming. And the third one in August will be the district report on the goals as well as new goals. And I think those three components are important. Certainly not to be included in the strategic plan, not the only thing put in there. But for that consideration, that in the fall, then we start the plan for moving forward of any strategic plan, that could potentially be for five years, whatever the board wants to do.
So just to clarify, maybe I missed it from the comment, our evaluation of the prior five years and the success of the plan, is that something?
In the fall.
Okay, so we'll have that in the fall.
We'll have that and start fresh.
Dr., yeah, Dr. Small, could you explain a little bit, because I wasn't here five years ago, what the process is, what the timeline is in discussing, developing, drafting, and approving a strategic plan?
Sir, there are multiple ways to approach a strategic plan. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this might have been the first formal strategic plan that went forward on this board with a community engagement component of it. And that would be the kind of options that this board would have a discussion surrounding as to the best way to approach it. In the past, the community engagement portion of the strategic plan was actually done by a group of citizens as well as a outside component for survey. Those will all be components of the future plan that this board will need to consider in terms of best way going forward. And that was truly a special committee that was formed. Mr. Bradley was part of it at that time. It was a group of very dynamic citizens. They took the lead. The goal was to be as engaging as possible, yes. And that was the first time we get a strategic plan. And I'm just really proud to say that that was something that I had worked towards. The board saw that that was important. Dr. Kate saw it as important. And we were able to go forward with it. And I'm really pleased that, you know, Dr. Small is looking at some ideas and incorporating and, you know, the equity and goals and that. So this is really, really important.
And I know my wife and I participated in some of those community engagement meetings and discussions. With the current strategic plan scheduled to expire, I'm thinking just a few months, I'll use the word few, from now. And with the community engagement meetings that were held and the length of time to host those and gather the information and summarize it and ingest it and all those types of things, again, has there been thought around the timeline associated to the strategic? I don't worry, there's no question about it because this is really important. But has there been thought about if we start this in the fall with finalization of information gathering from what we currently have going on? Have you given any additional thought into the timeline and moving forward to develop it?
We can start, when we close one, we can start the next one. Absolutely.
And to specifically answer your question, we can set up that duration of data collection, which I think is maybe your concern when we spread across the district and we create facilities for a certain number of people. We kind of put that schedule in with the consultant that we hired. We interviewed a couple of them, just in one of the presentations, and how they would do that facilitation of the community portion. So if we wanted it done in three months, they could then break it out so that they can touch districts and formulate a presentation that would fit that schedule. Or I think the last one was over five months potentially. Or we could even extend it. However, whatever it is, we need, we can work with the consultant.
And I think my vision that I see, you know, it's not like this one just ends abruptly. It's still going to continue flowing. There's still going to be ideas. We're still going to be moving forward. And we're going to start incorporating, I believe, some of the things that we've already been talking about. Some of the things that were presented tonight at first, curriculum and so on. So I think the process is still fluid and we continue going. But yes, we do have to, you know, move towards it.
And just to that point, we've met a lot of our tangible goals that we had established. So there are some goals that don't necessarily carry forward that should be closed and potentially replaced with other priorities. So it's a valuable exercise.
Thank you. The next was notification of employees and board members regarding board policy GBH, BBFA, the ethics policy, and I believe that that's already been done.
Yes, I can give an update on that if you'd like. So within this policy, there's supposed to be a information for rules, procedures, and guidelines for information of the policy. This goes out in our policy procedure handbook, which is for all employees that they receive annually. There's also that all new employees, as well as board members, are made aware of this policy, the policy and procedure manual, which this particular policy is a part of, for our employees. They do receive that. And then I can only speak to the new board members who are meeting with me. When they come in for their meeting, where they walk through with each one of the administrators, when they meet with Mr. Schumacher, who goes through policy, this will be one of the policy highlights for that.
Thank you. And the next item there is eligibility for Harvard Promise.
Yes, and if, Mr. Kovak, if you could give us a timeline summary of Harvard Promise, please.
I want to focus on this year's seniors. That's the first group that is being reviewed. When the school year ends, we assemble all of our students' eligibility data relating to attendance, rigor and quality, persistence, and community service. We share that data with Harper during the first week of June. By the middle of June, Harper College will send all of those students, seniors, in this case, participating in the promise program, one of three notifications. The first one being congratulations, you have met all of the eligibility requirements and remain eligible for the scholarship. The second being a conditional acceptance for the promise scholarship, noting that community service hours have not been fulfilled at that point in time. And that the seniors have until the end of the summer school session to meet that requirement. And the third notification would be a dismissal notice because the student fails to meet one or more of the eligibility requirements other than community service. Any student who gets that third notification also has information provided by Harper about the appeal process that they can take advantage of if they want to try to reinstate themselves for eligibility in the fall. The appeal request itself is due to Harper by the third week of June. And at the closing week of June, the Appeals Committee will need to review all of those requests by students for reinstatement and make determinations of whether or not they will be readmitted. The seniors who received that second notice, that is the conditional acceptance, noting that community service had not been fulfilled, again, have until the end of summer school to fulfill that. And then we will send a new data report to Harper at that point in time that includes not just the seniors, but all of the students in all of the grade levels who are participating in the program. So that Harper can then follow up with any of those students with either a good news notice of continued eligibility or a notice of dismissal. There is a separate appeal window that would apply to the ninth through 11th graders. You may wonder about a senior who fails to meet the community service requirement in that end of summer school timeline and the fact that their appeal window gets closed by that timeline. And that is accurate. In this scenario I just described, a student, a senior, does not have the ability to appeal eligibility based on failure to fulfill community service. Not sure if there are other specific questions about the scholarship that I can try to offer you more information about.
So just to clarify, the three notifications come from Harper College related to the eligibility?
That's correct.
Okay. Do, does 211 provide any notification of proficiency to the student, or is it...?
That is the timeline that I described. What we provide is continual and frequent notifications to students during the school year about their ability to check their status within the student readiness plan and encouraging them to complete and enter their community service hours in that timeline.
And are parents aware if their students are proficient? I know on Infinite Campus, I can see data for academics, but I don't necessarily see data for Harvard Promise.
The data for Harvard Promise is located in the student readiness plan. Parents have access to their students' plans and that part.
Okay, so parents would go into the student readiness plan?
That's correct.
And that would be, okay, so there would be no notification that's something that the parents have to be proactive on?
Parents are included in all of the communications to students throughout the school year. They receive the identical copy each time they send a message.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, then we move on to consideration of SAT preparation as curriculum. And one of the things to note here is that additions or deletions from the courses offered follow board policy IF, which is curriculum development. Dr. Small, would you talk to that a little?
Absolutely. And that follows along with our presentation tonight as well as some of the other approvals that occurred that if there's to be consideration or suggestion of consideration of a new course, that would go through the Curriculum Committee. And we have a process that they go through in terms of any new courses that come forward.
I'd like to add an additional comment, just because I've been thinking a lot about this since the last meeting. And one, I've made my comments clear about, you know, variances in SAT prep provided for students between buildings. So, you know, I'm not going to be the dead horse. I want to make my feeling clear. But on this specific issue, you know, thinking about this, I hesitate. If SAT prep becomes an actual curricular, a part of the curriculum, to me, I believe it would then be most likely an elective rather than a requirement. And that, to me, makes me, you know, I dislike the idea simply because we already have so much pressure on our students to stay on track for their credit-bearing courses by the time they graduate, that saying, well, you know, now it's an elective. You know, I don't, I think that, you know, some students, I ultimately wonder if that would actually reduce access from current levels and levels that I've said that I expect to see from a... the district next year based on the model that we're currently operating on. So, yeah.
Is it possible to maybe present this to the curriculum committees and just get some feedback from them, what their thoughts are in regards to this? How can we help our students? How can we be equitable in SAT prep throughout all of our schools? Is there something we can explore?
Mr. Schumacher, you can put that on the call recording room?
I think I could do a spoiler that, but each department in the fall.
And obviously, this is something that doesn't apply to all grade levels equally, but we do have a graduation requirement that you have to do your driver's ed to graduate, at least the classroom portion of it, and there are mechanisms to provide that. So, you know, I could see this as a parallel to the driver's ed model that we offer.
So then, would there ever be an option to take this preparation course outside of school, like driver's ed?
To meet the grad, or to meet the curriculum requirement? It's possible. I just think it should be treated with a little more weight than any after-school activity.
I just hesitate to come down and potentially create a policy that we say is, in theory, supposed to increase access and instead have the opposite effect. We say, you know, student families that can afford for outside services to meet the requirement, you know, not every family is able to do that, and then by introducing it as an elective, especially when there's so much pressure, not just on our high-achieving students to meet, you know, get as many AP courses as they can, graduate with potentially 15 college credits, I mean, we already, we have high standards and there's a lot of pressure, not just on our high-achieving students, but on our students that have significant challenges or economically disadvantaged, they don't have the same sorts of opportunities that other students might have, there's significant pressure on them to, to meet their, stay on track for their course requirements, and just by introducing more electives, I just worry that the effect, even if the intention is good, would actually lessen access to the students that, at least I personally am most interested in increasing access to that type of materials too.
I agree with that.
So I'm definitely open to hearing about, you know, someone who's more experienced in this particular kind of curriculum than I am, or the curriculum committee, and what the thoughts on are on the most equitable approach.
And maybe they can present some options, and I think that that's kind of what we're looking for, to be equitable at all of our schools, provide the options and provide the support for our students for them to be successful, because it's got that rolling effect.
And I know in my household, my son attended the Saturday morning SAT prep workshop with pre-test component of it, and I think the turnout on that was relatively good. I think it was better than what was expected.
Agreed, it was several letters.
So I think if it's offered and it's structured such that it doesn't conflict with a lot of other curriculum, like Ms. Kettle's suggesting, I think our students would take advantage of it more so than, in some cases, when it's an activity, it's kind of shoot horned on when the instructors might be available to provide that.
But correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Schumacher, even that was presented and delivered as an activity, it wasn't delivered as a curriculum program?
Correct. And I'm confident in our curriculum committee's ability to take a look at this in the fall and then come back to you with that fall report with some analysis, some recommendations, and some options. That'd be great.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you very much. That would be good. All right. The next is potential creation of board appointments for committees. I'm not exactly certain what you were looking for. I know the sexual harassment, I would imagine, would fall under student wellness, and we do have Ms. Kettle and Mr. Kovac, who are going to be serving on that committee, so I know they'll both bring their expertise to it. Policy, we already have a policy committee, and we do have a community engagement committee that, our community, we have Mr. Dubrowski and Mr. Kovac are serving on our community and family committee.
Right, and the only point when I brought these items up were that these are, these are closed meetings, they're not open to the public. There really isn't, now that we have no budget finance committee meeting, there isn't outside of the board meeting a mechanism for our community to engage in dialogue, if you will, in certain aspects that may need more of a discussion than just in here.
I disagree with that statement. None of, I've never been, I've never felt precluded in engaging in conversations and dialogue with constituents or members of the public, or students, or staff. I don't need a formal committee structure in order to do that.
We've had a really good turnout of people coming to speak to us between 18, 20 community members, so I think we're very open and I think we've been receptive, and I know that, I think each of the board members has talked to individuals, so I think we're receptive and we will have the reports from the committee that will be presented here. So information will be shared and put forward, and since we have the live streaming, the information is out there.
And that's valid. The only caveat to that is the people that are invited to those committees, it's not available to a community member who might be interested in attending a committee and providing specific comments to that topic or learning more about it. It's limited to who's asked to show up, who's asked to provide the feedback, how that feedback then is returned in a report to the board.
Dr. Small, I'm wondering, you know, one of the things that we discussed at the last board meeting was the need, you know, to desire, and I believe it would be managed to continue by streaming our board meetings, you know, in terms of the future to increase accessibility and transparency, et cetera. I'm wondering if any of our committees, you know, when we're looking for, for example, parents to join our parent connections committee, if those parents, how those parents are aware of the opportunity to serve on such a committee, and if, for example, we could say that, you know, you can intend, should have interest in this committee, it needs to subsume such a time, if you're not able to attend in person, let's say, like in my position, you have small children at home and you can't find a sitter, you still have the opportunity to serve because you can teleconference in, because we have that technology already available. I'm wondering if on any of these committees where members of the public can participate and engage, if they can do so remotely?
I also think a good solution would be our new five-year strategic plan. Once we start formalizing that, we're going to have our community engagement, and so I'm sure these are going to be some hot topics that can be discussed at that time with the community. So maybe, and also, and you brought it up, that you want this to continue and not just stop at the five years, so these could be ongoing conversations, and then potentially these committees could be formed within there and not necessarily in a board presence.
Well, just to clarify, the current committees are administrative committees, they're not open to the public. We serve as liaisons to those, so we're just participants within the administration. The purpose of this item is discussing creating a committee that is open for that kind of mechanism that wouldn't necessarily be an administrative committee, you know, that's going beyond what the role of the admin is, but to allow something for us to connect with the community in a, in almost a dialogue. And that, it's similar to what you would see at the village coffee with the council, where they, you know, people can voice their concerns to the village trustees, they can write up a report, so-and-so is having trouble with vagrants here or there, and then you can bring that to the administration so that they can further delve into the issue at the administration operational level, if you will.
I don't see the presence of the administration as somehow inhibiting public speech, which I feel I do the implication. And what I'm saying is that I've just never, I've never felt precluded from engaging in any kind of dialogue with students, staff, various members of the administration, certainly with the community, who wish to talk with me. And I don't need, you know, a committee in order to make, to formalize that process. I don't.
And I respect that, Ms. Kettle, but there are members in the community that aren't looking to reach out to an individual, they just have a general topic of concern that they're, you know, trying to bring forward, and some of them may or may not feel that it warrants the attention of an entire board meeting.
But if they have a concern, it really does need to come to the full board, and this is the opportunity for public comments, I think, because the meeting that we have is a meeting of the Board of Education between the bills and other things that we've brought forward. I'm wondering if possibly, what I'm hearing from you is, is you're looking to have something like a town hall meeting or, because we don't have a dialogue here, because we don't have all the information. Maybe that's something as part of communication that could be incorporated into our strategic plan. That might be something that allows for community members to meet something informal and, you know, just to be able to listen, because sometimes there's a concern, if you get into a dialogue and we don't have all the information, it can end up negative as opposed to being positive.
Completely agree.
So maybe, you know, this could be part of our, maybe our communication through our strategic plan going down that road, and having that discussion a little bit later on as we go down the road.
Well, if we move into that, I mean, sexual or feminine policy, I mean, it sort of makes sense what I, if it was to break out, I'm going to just pick up. Yeah, because it brought me to a point in regard to community engagement, I think, apparently just getting here, I think it is a huge outside from the community as regards to direct conversation and direct dialogue. See, we have the platform here for a public comment, but as alluded, you do not have that healthy dialogue. Sometimes, excuse me, sometimes it's just as simple as having a conversation back and forth instead of issues. Otherwise, you have these gaps in the communication, because we have issues where two months ago, where it went from no, no, no public comment in regards to sexual assault to every meeting and in the kind of like, to present all types of issues down the line. I do agree that communication needs to be opened up, and if we step that in, we implement it to our strategic plan for the next five years, ultimately won't it eventually lead to the forming of a committee or the forming of some type of group to initiate these types of directions?
The board doesn't have any standing committees, so the committees that we're on are part of the school. I appreciate it, you know, our students coming, there are, the staff has been working with them, and then the wellness committee, which, you know, you folks are going to be part of, will have that information and be able to, whatever the group is, you know, take a look at the dynamics that are involved and give us a report here. So I think if anyone has any questions, comments, concerns, they certainly can come here, or they will know which board member they can certainly comment and, you know, share something with or their thoughts, or, you know, anything that they feel is pertinent towards that particular topic that you're part of that committee.
I think the theory is, I mean, having such a, you know, when we go back to sex policy, it'd be a most recent, where we have a situation where something is so huge, it's kind of a surprise to everyone sitting here, and I just, as a board member, I just don't want to see that happen moving forward. I'd like to open up that last communication. On my road to campaign, there were a lot of things I learned from community members speaking to teachers, all stakeholders, and right now, it is, it is a consensus that the line of communication isn't as good as it is now. So I think that's what I've administered, probably, kind of touched on, I understand the thought process, but I guess.
I'm interested in the lines of communication, but I'd like to hear from, I'd like to get a more varied perspective than just our luck upon the board of what that should look like and how that should actually, because it's not, not to serve our interests, right? You know, it's to serve the public, so I'd like more detail from people who are part of us to decide what an effective strategy would be.
With respect to no standing committee, that's a policy that we can change, so we could have standing committees. It's not wrong, it's a policy.
And the policy committee can discuss that if it's at that, if it's at the board. So I have a couple of thoughts. One is, we have to be cautious that if there's a committee, and say there's two board members on that committee, and they engage in conversation with others, that those two people are not speaking on behalf of the board, that that has, we have to be cautious of that. I am very much a supporter and endorser of community engagement, and one thing I would like to request and recommend is that our district does a purposeful job of communicating to the community what committees each of us is involved in, and what the purpose of those committees are, so that if there's a question on something that falls under our specific area outside of being on the board as a whole, that they feel comfortable coming to us as, I don't want to say subject matter experts, but, you know, individuals that are serving on those committees as liaisons and are intimately involved with those specific areas, that they, that they know maybe who they can go to on the board that's on the wellness committee, or, you know, on a different committee that they can go to and talk to and share that information. So I'd like the administration and the district to maybe communicate in a more relaxed fashion what we're doing as liaisons to those different areas, however you all decide to make the best of that.
Is that something that we're liking from you?
As far as, let me see if I can turn it up, just communicating more to the community what the board liaison positions are, what the description is of those duties, and who is serving on it.
Correct.
So a communication, and then if someone has a question or something, they can, you know, possibly send an email to the person attending the committee. But then we have to really keep in mind, you can't speak for the entire board without actually coming before the board if it's a particular item.
Right, we can certainly listen.
Right, which is, which is why it's almost better to have an open committee meeting where all the board members can attend, it's supposed to time and date, because with the existing administrative committee meetings, even board members don't know when other board members are meeting, and the frequency of those meetings, and, you know, the impact or agendas of those items. We don't find out until after a report's issued, and, you know, as far as being a participant or liaison in the committee meetings, we don't speak for the board, we can provide input and participate, but obviously, we're not directing the administration within that committee, so it just appears that we could do better for our community and provide them with a stronger voice outside of a three-minute restricted comment. And again, if you want to engage someone and be an affirmative listener and show empathy, a silent response is not what I would consider inviting, and I would expect that we would want to provide more for our community than that.
I agree, agree. I think the first step, and perhaps it's not, it's not an all-encompassing solution, what can be filed for the, for the board members, if you could put, committee, you know, liaison or whatever to this committee, to that committee, at least at some place, you know.
So that's, I've brought it twice, and I'm more than willing to do it, I would like to make sure that everybody's on the same page before I start making changes. So is that a consensus of the board, that I have to take your files with your liaison groups?
You say put the liaison. You say put the liaison appointment as part of the items that you just said.
That's what I'm agreeing on.
Yeah, that's a, it's a simple step. I don't know if it's, if it puts it out publicly, but, you know.
Is there any opposed to that?
No.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll do that. And I think, you know, we do have to get the message across that this is a meeting of the Board of Education to take care of board business. We invite the public to come, but we can't have that dialogue. And again, possibly through our strategic planning, maybe we can take a look at how do we want to have some type of maybe quarterly communication or an opportunity to maybe have some type of dialogue and see how that works. And if it's works, then it's something we can, you know, possibly continue. If it doesn't work, it's something that could be changed or tweaked.
So this would be something that we'd be looking at next year?
Not necessarily, I don't think.
Okay, because it wasn't clear when you stated strategic planning.
I think communication and that could be part of the discussion for, for communication being part of the strategic plan. I would, I would think that that's something we want to continue and expand upon because that's been an item that's really important.
No, I completely agree. I just, again, to the point brought up earlier, if we would just go through a strategic plan to confirm that this is a priority and that we should do something about it, I guess the delay doesn't really resonate with me and maybe I'm missing something.
I feel like we need to go through the process of planning to figure out what it is specifically we're talking about. So, you know, that's exactly what that process would provide. Verification and strategy, specifics, if it could be approved or disapproved of as a whole.
If the board decides to engage in a group or in some way to gather feedback from the community, that certainly could be a point where feedback could be gathered as to what type of engagement would actually entice them to be a part of, as opposed to setting up something that maybe is not productive to gather and to go together to have another dialogue.
Any other comments then? Then we're going to move along. The next point is consideration of representation of the community during negotiations.
And this I brought up, our last negotiations took over 15 months. And our contract is going to expire in a little over 12 months. And I think it'd be important for us to get ahead of that. And then as far as what the makeup of our team might be, I know that there was a lot of questions as to how it was decided, who would be part of that team or how that team was structured. And I don't know if we really, if there's any issue with having that discussion because I think the community should know how we deliberated on that.
I'm not following, you referring to the last round of contract negotiations? Do you have questions about?
And deliberated on what? Deliberated on the contract or deliberated on who is going to represent?
The team makeup, right, our negotiating team makeup.
You know what, let's, let's take a look at that since you brought that up. One thing that's really important is all seven board members participated in setting up the parameters. So we looked at the contract, we went through it page by page, we discussed it, we took a look at that and everyone had input. I will point out that we have never had a board member sitting on the board.
I don't understand why not.
Can I finish? And that was something that was really important to me. And that's something that I had been stressing for a number of years. And we were finally able to do that. Not because we were questioning anyone, but because we wanted to show that there was transparency. So yes, Mr. Dombrowski, I put my name in to be part of that because that was something that I thought was really important. I sat at our negotiation meetings because that was the role of the board member because I don't have all of the information as the administrators that were there at the meeting. Mr. Kovak, Ms. Hummel, you know, they have all of the information. The role of the board member was basically to observe, to listen, and to bring it back to the board what was observed. And that was what I believe I was able to do.
Concur.
And I think that we really should have a board member being part of the negotiation continually with that. I think that that was important.
When you say being part of the negotiation, you mean, you mean sitting at the table during negotiations and speaking?
No, sitting at the table and listening.
Okay, I disagree with that. It is unusual for a board member not to be involved in contract negotiations with the union. It's an exception.
The board member who is in that room cannot be involved in the negotiation discussion because that board member does not individually, as is our policy and is the policy of, I believe, every single Board of Education, does not individually represent the board as a whole. So that individual cannot speak on behalf of the board as a whole. So that individual cannot speak on behalf of the board as a whole as an individual.
I disagree.
Well, no, no one on the negotiating team can until we're presented with something and vote. That's the only time the board can speak. Whether a board member is leading a discussion or not does not imply concurrence from the board or an action by the board. But that's, that's, regardless, the whole purpose was just to have a transparent conversation of what our board negotiating team would be made up of. And just having this dialogue as to allowing the public to see, okay, this Klinkhulis has the most experience or Mr. Kramer being retired has the most time, you know, just that dialogue. That's all that this request is really for, is to allow the public that we are accountable to understand how we decide what our team makeup should be. Or even if we decide that, hey, in the past, our negotiations took too long, maybe we need an outside negotiator that is completely independent of the district and the board.
I'm just confused because it's very different from what it seems was brought up at the last meeting. It seems to be a wholly different idea.
Consideration of representation of the community during negotiations.
Yeah, which I thought was, I thought meant, should we have a community member on the negotiating team? But it seems to be a very different discussion that you want to discuss who the negotiating team is. We're having that discussion right now.
Well, no, the negotiating team is the representation of the community.
I know what that is.
Yeah.
That doesn't answer my original question. So are we having a conversation about whether or not we're having a specific community member on as part of our negotiation team? Or do you want to have a discussion about everybody who's going to be on our negotiating team? Because those seem to me to be two different things.
Who's the negotiating team?
Dr. Small, can you inform us who sits on the administration, who sits on the negotiating team?
So typically what would happen is the conversation would be between the administration and the union in terms of suggestions as to how many should be on the team, how it's going to unfold, what time of day the meetings will typically occur. That conversation has not happened yet. So the component of a board that certainly should be considered is to, whether you want to continue what you started last time, which is to have a board member present on that committee or not.
And since it's a discussion of negotiations, because maybe at that point we would be talking about, you know, the reviewing the contract, is it a conversation that we can have in closed session? If we're talking about the contract, then it's not in the open session. If we're just talking about a board member who would serve on that negotiating team, that we can discuss in the open session.
It would be helpful for me to understand when exactly the negotiating team is going to start.
So that's what I would suggest, is that when we have the detail as to the time commitment, when it is, because it is certainly helpful that when negotiations start, that the same team is there, that there are members that are consistently at them because then we have to catch people off of the team. Now, when those are in place, then it comes back to the board for the discussion of whether, there's still discussion of whether to have someone or not and then who that someone is.
When do we start this process formally? Like is there, there a management?
I have not.
Not a management.
Yeah, or 15 months is an extremely long time to negotiate.
Right, we allowed ourselves nine months and we were well beyond 15. And we were, there were some terse times there. So it almost behooves us to be a little more proactive.
I would disagree. We stretched out those negotiations and had very lengthy times in between meetings. And the time in between meetings took us time to catch up to what we were trying to accomplish because we were not meeting consistently. And when you meet consistently a long time before the contract is ended, there's no, there's no need to move it faster, there's no urgency that tends to be on both sides. So there is a, certainly a very appropriate middle ground for when you start so that you consistently commit to the meetings, consistently meet and stay on track with conversations that continue over short periods of time as opposed to long breaks, when you spend a lot of time catching up to where you are in the meeting as opposed to continuing to move forward.
Can we extract more information about this process like over the summer? Or are we not?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is there consensus that we bring this topic back once Dr. Small has some information to share with us? And then the discussion, if I'm understanding correctly, would be of a board member possibly sitting on the negotiating team?
You can decide that at any time.
Okay.
To have the member or not have the member. I would suggest you wait as to who the member is, as to what the agreement is for the time of day and the commitment behind that. So we can do it at that time.
Yeah, I appreciate that those take some time. You know, a lot of people have jobs. And so there is some impracticality in it, but I think that it's possible to do, to have a board member probably going to be on the team, sitting on the team. You just have to pick a record.
I disagree with what I believe your implication is for the reasons that Mr. Rosenwood was already here and clearly stated. But I am very, very interested in having a board member in the room as the observer of the interim board at the board.
There's a big, there's a big difference.
But it seems like this is the discussion that we're going to have in the future.
Mr. Framer, I'd like to recommend that you take a look at the O'Leary Code Article 6-20 and Board Member Authority Board Policy BBA with regards to representing the Board of Education and the rules and regulations around that.
You're not representing the Board of Education, you are hard to go in and team Mr. Rosenwood. There is a huge difference, you are misinterring.
Okay.
You are misinterring.
Gentlemen, I think we're, we've discussed this. We're going to bring this back at later date. And we'll take a look at having a board member serving on the negotiations. I'm going to move us along to the next item, which is board member expenses. And the motion is that the board, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursements for Curtis Bradley to complete the online training for the following courses. New Board Member Online Open Meetings Act, State Mandated Training, the State Mandated Professional Development Leadership and Performance Evaluation Reform Act Training for School Board Members and the Basics of Governance Training for School Board Members by the Illinois Association of School Boards. And Timothy McGowan to complete the online training for the following courses. New Board Member Online Open Meetings Act, State Mandated Training, the State Mandated Professional Development Leadership and Performance Evaluation Act Training for School Board Members and the Basics of Governance Training for School Board Members by the Illinois Association of School Boards as submitted. May I have a motion, please?
Salute.
Second. Okay, any questions?
Again, COVID is moving very fast, okay? Things are changing as we sit here for a year. Does the ICE, do they have plans on having the in-person training this summer? Do you know?
I do not.
It's not a matter of whether or not they need to have a friend, the district should pay more. I think going to the, going to the three-day class is more valuable than sitting in front of a computer. But they may not, they may not have plans.
This is the only training they offer at this time.
Okay.
So in order for them to meet their timelines and suggested timelines that are given to the board, this is about.
I thought maybe they, you know, they could throw something together pretty quickly or get a waiver for the timeline.
You know, unfortunately, I think people have gotten comfortable with Zoom. And it is a little bit time-saving in that, but people have gotten comfortable.
Okay, when you said online training, it's a Zoom class?
Webinar?
Or it's not a program text? I mean, what is the online?
We're not in charge of this either way.
I should take a look at the webinars forum.
Well, that's, that's a different story.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, roll call, please. Mr. Rosenwood, or Ms. Kettle, or Mr. Kramer?
I.
Mr. Dombrowski?
I.
Mr. McGowan?
I.
Mr. Bradley?
I.
Mrs. Klinkhulis?
I.
Okay, that brings us to potential topics for future discussions. And again, I just want to touch on this. This was added to the board agenda a couple of years ago. And the object was to be able to allow board members to present something onto the agenda that maybe would not have come up otherwise. The ask is that you either speak with the board president or with the superintendent or with both to make certain that it's not a topic that's going to be coming up later, that, you know, talk about the relevance of it a little bit. And also so as the board members are not blindsided about, you know, about things. So given that, is there any topic for future discussion? Is there something that we want to explore?
I have a question. The board meeting, are the board meetings translatable in Spanish? What's the question that I got this past week? Or the board information? Is the information discussed today available in second language?
It currently is not.
No. I think it would be beneficial to have a conversation, again, open line communication. I think that I did have conversations at some board meetings regarding some Latino families that don't have access or may not understand exactly what's going on with their children in the district. And it was a good point that was brought to me a month ago.
Is that a topic that you would like for discussion at a future board meeting? Or would you like a kind of an update and see what can be done in regards to some translation?
Either or, either or.
Okay. Dr. Small, is that something that we can do to take a look at that? And maybe bring some information back to the board?
I will send information to the board on that so that they have a base knowledge and then decide how we move forward.
I also just, we post on YouTube and you can change your settings on the closed captioning to translate into Spanish. I don't know if it's exactly accurate, but you can read along in Spanish even if there is a verbal translation or an audio translation.
Thank you. And I'm not certain how many other languages it would translate into.
Several dozen.
Okay, so that might, that might cover it, but thank you. If there's nothing else under that, then let's go to the committee reports and I will try to be really brief. N S S E O is... It was more of a sellout, a celebratory meeting, recognized some of our shining stars. And May is Better Hearing and Speech Month, so we took a look at our students that are deaf and hard of hearing. We had a young person in the early childhood and he was using his assistive technology and he came before us. We also recognized a young lady that's in eighth grade, again, using her assistive technology. technology. She was also recognized by Infinitec for her outstanding ability to be able to learn the, the technology and the staff were supporting her. And then there was a young man that's in third grade with his assistive technology who were recognized, the nurses and others who, who supported the NSSO. The budgets are already been brought forward, so thank you for, for supporting the budget for NSSO, they do a tremendous job at Kirk for our students. Unless you have any questions, I'll move to EdRed. I did sit in on their EdRed session, which was this past Monday. Bridgette Eversen, who's their executive director, she provided some updates on some of the different bills. One of them that we need to kind of keep an eye on is for special ed and that one is looking at keeping students whose 22nd birthday falls, you know, sometime during the year, the student would be able to stay till the end of that year. So there's legislation going on in regards to that, which may have a financial impact on the special ed programs. They also are looking at educational services for any students that are expelled or suspensions. Our students, we work with them, we have the alternative school. There were some other things that she talked about, the TIP recording reform, looking at that and looking at some of the required reporting requirements, where we would have to look at the number of jobs that are projected and then the number of jobs that are created as a result of that TIP, so I thought that that was kind of interesting. And Senator Andy Westphal also has brought forward a reduction from the initial TIP from 23 years to, to 10 years and then if there's an extension of looking at five-year extension. So there was, there was a number of things that were brought forward. There's also a House bill on statewide pandemic protocols, Michelle Musson's brought that forward and requiring proper personnel protective equipment. And there's still a lot of conversation going on with that one. So those are a highlight of, of some of those and then our future reports, Mr. Rosenwood is going to be our liaison to, to EdRed. And that's all I have, fair enough, if you have any questions. The, the next item is the upcoming events and calendar. And at this point, we need to go back into our closed session. Let me take the motion again. All right, so we're going to go back into closed session and let me read the motion again. The board will enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees.
So move.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenwood?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkouli?
Aye.
So the board has returned back to open session, may I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenwood?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkouli?
Aye.
And the first order is the, that the Board of Education accept the retirement request of Jennifer Kraus effective May 2025 according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkouli?
Aye.
The next item is that the, that effective July 1st, 2021, Aaron Holmes be appointed as the Director of Communication for District 211 at a gross salary of $153,000. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenwood?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkouli?
Aye.
And I, the board president declares this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Thank you.